All right. Good evening, folks, and thank you for attending the November 1st meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. Our first item this evening is a land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands that we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Weot people. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Weot language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods or among the redwoods." Past action by local, state, and federal governments have removed the Weot and other indigenous people from their land and have threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Weot community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. If you would like to join, please stand for the flag salute. Will the city manager please call the roll?
Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Stillman?
Present.
All present.
So for this evening, if you wish to make a public comment, there are two different public comment periods, and there are three ways to do so. So if you are here in person, you can line up behind the podium. For early oral communications, we do use the card system. I believe there are six cards out there already, so if you have one of those six cards, please line up at the podium, and I believe there is a seventh one available. So this early oral communications period is only 15 minutes. So we will be first doing that, and then we also take public comment on each individual agenda item, and then again, at the end of the meeting, under Oral Communications, under Item 12. Yes, Item 12. And that is a three-minute time period at the end of the meeting. And so if you don't get a chance to speak, you can either stay here through our meeting or come back at the end to be able to have that three-minute time period as well. So if you are here in person with one of those cards, please line up. We are going to prioritize our speakers that are here in person, and it looks like we don't have too many on Zoom as well. So we are gonna prioritize the 15 minutes for folks that are here in person. And again, for each item, we will take in-person public comment first and then move to online comments. We won't be going back and forth. So if you'd like to comment on an item, please make sure that you're lined up and ready to go. So again, our early oral communications, this is a 15-minute time period to allow to address matters that are not on the agenda. And so, and know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda, but at the end of oral communications, council members may respond to statements and requests that require council action and that would like to be set forward to a future agenda or referred to staff. So again, for this 15-minute time period at the beginning, you'll have two minutes. We will be utilizing the card system, so please, whoever has Card 1, come forward. Thank you.
We ready? Good evening. I'm Rabbi Bob Rottenberg, one of the rabbis serving Temple Beth El in Eureka. Temple Beth El serves Jews throughout Humboldt County, and our membership includes more than 40 Jewish Arcata residents. I'm a member of the Humboldt Interfaith Council, a member of the Spiritual Leaders Caucus of the True North Organizing Network, and a faith partner with Arcata House Partnership. I'm also a proud resident of our fine city. I had originally planned to attend this meeting in support of the proposed emergency weather shelter declaration, as well as to support your work for additional affordable housing. I appreciate your continuing work on behalf of all Arcata residents, housed or unhoused. I don't believe that your valuable time should be devoted to a resolution concerning the war in the Middle East, even though this is indeed an issue that concerns many of us for different reasons. This is a complex issue, and I ask you to not rush into formulating a resolution without putting serious thought into exactly what you want to say. Members of our Arcata Jewish community are here this evening to ask that anything you might do along these lines be focused on two main points: an end to the senseless killing on both sides and a return of all the hostages. If you truly believe that such a resolution would be in the best interests of Arcata and its citizens, I would be happy to be part of a coalition to begin a dialogue about the purpose and language for such a resolution. Thank you again for your dedicated service to our city.
Thank you. We will take the next speaker, please.
Can I hand these out to you guys? A printed power.
Hi. So my name is Theodore Lee. This is Steven in Bouyaou, and we're all students of Cal Poly Humboldt here. We're here to advocate for speed bumps at the Arcata Marsh. The Arcata Marsh is a wildlife sanctuary and is one of the most unique habitats that we have here. It plays a crucial role in our city's water treatment system, and it's a local gem with global significance. Many people from across the world come here and look at the marsh, and they like to see it as an area of wildlife conservation. We propose to add some speed bumps in areas of key wildlife crossings, primarily for otters, and also effective speed limit signs, because the ones right there are advisatory. They're not mandatory. Visitors currently face potential safety risks, and people who come and visit that might see that and leave a bad impression. Many animals have also been victims of vehicle strikes, including many of our local river otters, which we don't have that many. There are some areas of special concern that Dr. Jeffrey Black has pointed out in one of our slides. There are a few latrine spots that they like to use, and they've been hit, unfortunately, crossing them. There has been large community desire for change. Lots of articles have been posted. Some have been in the magazines, and there were a lot of community outrage when the otters got hit, including some, like, murals for the deceased otters. And we just wanted to preserve the marsh's natural beauty and its importance as a wildlife conservation area and promote Arcata City values, especially public safety.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, guys, so much. Appreciate it. All right.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Lattica, and I'm president of the local Jewish temple, Temple Beth El in Eureka. I wish to share my concerns regarding the council's potential involvement in taking a position on the Israeli-Hamas conflict. As a concerned county resident, I believe it is crucial for Arcata City Council to approach this matter with caution and refrain from oversimplifying the complexities of this conflict. First and foremost, it is important to acknowledge that the Israeli-Hamas conflict is deeply complicated, that spans decades, rooted in historical, geopolitical, and socio-economic factors. The situation involves a multitude of actors, interests, and narratives, making it challenging to adopt a one-size-fits-all approach. While it is essential for us to embrace and support conversations that promote peace, understanding, and empathy, adopting a position as a city council on such a divisive matter may unintentionally polarize our community and undermine the principles of inclusivity that we hold dear. Instead, I believe it would be more constructive for the council to encourage open dialogue and mutual respect while acknowledging the complexities of the conflict. I urge the Arcata City Council to consider the potential consequences of taking a position on the Israeli-Hamas conflict. While it is important for public officials to engage in global and national discourse, doing so requires a comprehensive understanding of the nuances involved. This understanding is often challenging to achieve, and taking a position could oversimplify a conflict that is deeply rooted in complex historical and political dynamics. Thank you for your attention to this matter, and I hope the council will prioritize fostering understanding, peace, and unity within our community.
Take the next speaker, please, and please refrain from cheering, jeering, comments. It makes people uncomfortable to be able to speak, so, thank you.
I really appreciate the job you're doing, and I appreciate this opportunity to be here. My name is Amanda Devens, and I live in Eureka and Arcata some of the time, and I'm the membership co-chair of Temple Beth El. Your constituents clearly are vocal and opinionated, and our opinions are diverse. You try the best to hear all of us, but yet, if you make a resolution that does not mourn all civilian life lost, you do not speak for all of us. Many have inserted their biases and agendas into the Middle East complex without knowledge of its complex history or awareness that they are displaying hate, labeling, and glorifying violence. I have lived my life in the shadow of a real Holocaust, and now I'm looking at another. Two-thirds of Europe's Jews were killed when no one would take them in. That was a real genocide. And as anti-Jew rhetoric is exploding in Britain, France, the Middle East, and even in our safe haven of America -- and I'm an immigrant from England to America -- when institutions of freedom resolve to support an avowedly anti-Semitic organization, we Jews are feeling far from safe. The people who are openly glorifying, applauding, and supporting Hamas are cheering a terrorist organization whose stated goal is to eliminate Jews not only from the river to the sea in an explicitly stated genocide, but also states Jews worldwide are their target. Their manifesto also rejects any peace process.
Thank you. That is your two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll take our next speaker, please. Again, please refrain from applause, and it'll make everybody be able to move quicker. So next speaker, who has the next card, please? Take the next card.
Hi. My name is Sophia Santos, and I'm a politics student from Cal Poly Humboldt, where I study human rights law. And I'm here today to ask for your support of a ceasefire resolution on Gaza. Support of Israel does something very dangerous. It implies that Hamas strikes first this time. We all know this is not true, because Israel, by the sheer fact of its existence, always strikes first. Israel is a settler colonial state based on the murder and expulsion of Palestinians. When considering the question of peace, it is always important to ask, "Peace for whom?" Israel continuing to occupy Palestinian land while ethnically cleansing and displacing Palestinians is not peace. Israel systemically depriving Palestinians of food, water, and shelter while locking them in a concentration camp and bombing them is not peace. Colonization will never be peace, and Palestinians, like all oppressed humans on earth, have the right to resist their colonization as it is enshrined in international law. Israel resorted to unlawful collective punishment, has intentionally cut off fuel, water, and electricity, and has blocked the entry of humanitarian aid to the over 2 million Palestinians in Gaza. Entire cities have been razed to the ground. Homes, schools, UN facilities, hospitals, and homes of aid workers and journalists have all been targeted directly by Israeli airstrikes. The people of Gaza are running dangerously low on water, food, and medicine. And while I do condemn all violent acts on any innocent civilians, I ask, are you considering a resolution condemning Israel for using white phosphorus against Gaza's civilian population? Are you going to condemn Israel for its planned war crime of forced removal of 1 million Palestinians from northern Gaza? Are you going to condemn Israel for cutting off food, water, fuel, and electricity, another war crime called collective punishment? Did you ever think to condemn Israel when they assassinated Palestinian journalist Shereen Abdou Akhle in broad daylight, or when they brutalized the people carrying her coffin peacefully? Or when hundreds of innocent Palestinian protesters were killed by Israeli snipers during the March of Return? Did the people in office before you ever condemn Israel at any point since its inception when it violently displaced a country full of people into a 60-mile corner of their own country, creating the largest concentration camp in history, the largest open air prison in the world?
Thank you. That is your two minutes. Thank you. And we will have three minutes again at the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We will take the next card. There should be at least two more cards out there.
Hi. My name is Jamila. I didn't prepare anything official, because I'm having a hard time being a normal person right now, because I have, first of all, family in Gaza. Secondly, I'm horrified by the fact that we are watching an actual genocide and ethnic cleansing of Palestinians happen in real time, broadcast on live TV. So us calling for a resolution is not actually complicated at all. Israel has been illegally occupying Palestine since 1948 and committing ethnic cleansing ever since. So us calling for a ceasefire is really to protect all life, because this will actually impact all life: Palestinians, Israelis, Jews, Muslims, Druze, alike. So this actually isn't complicated at all. This is -- what we are watching right now is a genocide. It is war crimes. It's a war crime to blow up a hospital. It's a war crime to collectively punish an entire population of people. And these war crimes and these human rights violations are well documented by various human rights organizations, Israeli and Palestinian, and United Nations alike. So this is not a complicated issue. We want this genocide to stop. This is not about religion. This is about human rights. So we are -- supporting Palestinian human rights is not anti-Semitic. It is not anti-Semitic to support Palestinian human rights. It's not complicated. We, as a duty, our tax dollars are funding Israeli apartheid. We pay $3.8 billion annually, unconditionally, to Israel, and these dollars are being used to commit genocide against Palestinians. It is illegal to fund genocide. So we have an obligation as American citizens to end this genocide of the Palestinians in Gaza and throughout all of Palestine.
Thank you. All right. I believe we have time for one more speaker this evening, so whoever has that last card, or if nobody picked it up, head to the podium.
Hello. Dave Mizur from Arcata. Yes, I just emailed you all a proposed resolution regarding Gaza. It reads as follows: "Arcata City Council Resolution Calling for Immediate Ceasefire in Gaza. Whereas the current war in Gaza is the immediate result of the October 7 terrorist attacks on Israel by Hamas, a brutal assault which killed over 1,400 Israelis and leaves over 200 held hostages, there is no moral justification for such an attack. And the war continues to claim innocent lives as the Israeli government has responded to the Hamas atrocity with over three weeks of missile attacks and now ground assaults, killing over 8,000 people, almost half of them children, destroying tens of thousands of homes and displacing over a million Palestinian residents. And the war threatens to escalate and expand to neighboring countries and beyond. Therefore, be resolved that the City Council of the City of Arcata calls for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza by all parties in the conflict, an immediate cessation of Israeli attacks on civilian targets, the withholding of United States military aid to Israel until they stop attacks on Gaza, United States government's support for international law prohibitions of war crimes, immediate negotiations for the return of hostages, opening of Gaza borders for humanitarian aid, restoration of access to power, water, communications, food, and health supplies in Gaza, and ongoing negotiations to resolve the long-term issues between Israel and Palestinians, respecting the needs and human rights of all people." So I'm proposing this as a resolution, and I would like to work with council members. This is a first draft, but I'd like to work with council members and hopefully put it on an agenda in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right. That brings us to the end of early oral communications, and again, we will have another time period at the end of the meeting for more public comment at that point, though we do have a pretty full agenda this evening. If you would like to stay for that time, please feel free to do so. Council members may respond to statements. I did want to open it up to the council if there were any statements that would like to be made. I know Councilmember Atkins Salazar had some words that she would like to share, and I have a couple items as well.
All right. First, I would just like to thank everyone that's here, you know, to hear and online speaking up and expressing their opinions on this matter. From whatever perspective is taken, the Israeli-Palestinian conflict is bringing about atrocities to innocent people, people like you and me, people who are simply trying to live their lives, provide for their families, keep their families safe, and work towards a better future for their communities. I have friendships, relationships, and associations with people from both sides of this issue, and I am grateful for this. It has helped me to avoid jumping quickly to one side and instead has challenged and motivated me to educate myself as much as possible, diving into information from a variety of perspectives. These relationships and what I have learned recently have emphasized the need for me as an outsider to tread carefully. What has been confirmed for me is that this conflict has been going on for hundreds of years, and in my opinion, is not as simple as taking a side. This is an extremely complex issue, and it is important to avoid oversimplification. As an elected official for the City of Arcata, I believe it is my responsibility to prioritize the needs of the people in Arcata and our surrounding communities. Over the past three years of my term, I have seen here in our community an increase in hate crimes and violence against marginalized communities, most recently the LGBTQ, Asian, Jewish, homeless, and Hispanic communities. I fear that making a proclamation on behalf of the City of Arcata on this complicated and longstanding issue will perpetuate divisiveness and potentially violence against innocent members of our community. Furthermore, I don't think it is our place as a local, nonpartisan governing body to take an official position on this complicated international issue. So... Okay. So just timeout, and... So personally... Personally...
Please continue, Stacy.
Personally, speaking as one member, these are my -- this is my own perspective on this, I do absolutely support the growing number of people who are calling for a humanitarian pause in fighting. I encourage people to continue to educate themselves on this crisis and to pursue conversations with those that have different perspectives. I believe... I believe that we will affect more positive change in our community if we can go beyond our own ideas and beliefs and seek out those with whom we disagree to respectfully have those difficult conversations with.
Go ahead. Okay, folks. I just want to thank people for coming out. This is activism. This is activism happening. It's happening in our town. I see you. I see you here. I encourage you to keep doing that and keep coming to meetings and keep organizing and keep protesting on the plaza on Saturday. I encourage it. At this point, I, however, do not support an emergency resolution to ask my council members to become experts tonight on this conflict. I am not -- I am asking my council members to not become experts in one night on a complex issue. As a private citizen, I will continue to demand a ceasefire, call my congressman... And call... Yep. Yep. I do. I have a microphone, and I can't even use it. Again, I am not asking my council members to become experts on this issue tonight, and we can talk about a future resolution that is come to by the constituency community. You can't even hear what I'm saying, so... All right. Do we have any other council members that would like to respond to statements? All right. Do we have any other council members that would like to respond to anything, or are we ready to move to ceremonial matters? Or do we need to take a break? I mean... All right. Again, thank you for your comments this evening. I look forward to speaking with more people about this issue for a future agenda, if that's gonna be the case, but tonight, there will be no emergency resolution tonight, because, again, we do not have that prepared, and I am not asking my fellow council members to educate themselves on this matter tonight in one night. All right. So again, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and we will return with our ceremonial matters. Thank you. Thank you. This evening, we'll be honoring Zero Waste Day, the Great American Smokeout, and California Retired Teachers Week. Our first item is a proclamation recognizing November 15th, 2023, as Zero Waste Day, and this will be read by Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Whereas the quantity and variety of single-use products and packaging continues to increase in Arcata's waste stream, and whereas the City of Arcata does not have adequate manufacturing infrastructure to support recycling and the majority of the materials recovered for recycling and compost must be transported long distances to re-enter a manufacturing process. And whereas the zero-waste philosophy is comprehensive, first emphasizing upstream waste preventative strategies and including materials reuse, recycling-based manufacturing, recycling, composting, and food waste digestion. And whereas Zero Waste Humboldt continues to help the City of Arcata with outreach to local restaurants regarding the single-use disposable foodware ordinance. And whereas great strides have been made by Zero Waste Humboldt to open a local reuse center to help divert from the waste stream. And whereas Zero Waste Humboldt reduced waste at this year's Oyster Festival, Zero Waste Humboldt organized, coordinated, and with the help of many wonderful volunteers and the local worm guy, collected and diverted one yard of recycling and 10 cubic yards of compost from landfill. And whereas the City of Arcata joined Zero Waste Humboldt's Refill Not Landfill Network and recorded that the city's water bottle refill station awarded from Zero Waste Humboldt has been used to refill an estimated 18,565 bottles to reduce single-use plastic bottles in our waste stream so far. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes November 15th, 2023, as Zero Waste Day and calls upon all Arcata residents to adopt or renew their commitment to choose to reuse. This can be done by reusing refillable cups, water bottles, takeout containers, and shopping bags. The council commits to learning innovative waste prevention approaches and asks Arcadans to make a special effort to reduce waste and be mindful of purchases all year round. It's dated today, November 1st, and signed by our mayor, Sarah Schaefer, and I believe that we have Leila Richardson, Executive Director of Zero Waste, here to receive this, so.
Thank you so much for doing this proclamation again this year. We're really excited to open a reuse center. We have a storage container, affin genitoli, and slowly but surely, hopefully, we'll have a big space to be able to take some of that stuff from landfill because currently, all of that byproduct windows, doors, and things like that are all going to landfill. So that's our biggest project, and I look forward to doing more big events like Oyster Festival, North Country Fair, and just continue to keep things out of landfill. So thank you so much for continuing to make Zero Waste Humboldt.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is in recognition of the Great American Smokeout, which is November 16th, 2023, and this will be read by Councilmember White.
As a former tobacco education educator for six years and a parent, this is dear to me, so I'm happy to recognize the Great American Smokeout, November 16th of 2023. Whereas the American Cancer Society encourages all tobacco users to join the Great American Smokeout and quit smoking for at least one day. And whereas each year, nearly 34,000 California adults die from smoking and over 20,000 kids become new daily smokers. And whereas vaping, electronic cigarettes had made smoking more attractive to youth and harder to quit. And whereas electronic cigarettes create hazardous waste in the form of plastics, semiconductors, heavy metals, and lithium-ion batteries for which there is no established disposal or recovery procedure. And whereas 25% of 11th graders in Arcata used electronic cigarettes in the past 30 days, and 47% of tobacco retailers in Arcata sold tobacco to underage adults during undercover purchase surveys. Now, therefore, be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes and supports the American Cancer Society's Great American Smokeout on Thursday, November 16th of 2023, and encourages all residents who use tobacco products to consider they do not need to stop smoking in one day, just start with day one. Dated November 1st, 2023, by Sarah Schaefer, our mayor. Jay?
Yes, Mayor and council members, I appreciate your efforts helping us publicize the fact that there are quit resources out there and that nicotine addiction is one of many serious problems, especially even at the local level here. I want to hand it off to Violet to give you some of the youth perspective on vaping in Arcata, but I also want to let you know there's a ready-made solution for you. In August, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors adopted a tobacco retail license policy, which can help regulate the tobacco marketplace and also helps youth, prevent youth addiction, and helps kids cut down on quit as well. So this policy has been adopted. The Board of Supervisors encouraged all jurisdictions in Humboldt County to adopt the same policy so that we can have a consistent marketplace throughout the county. And my program, Tobacco-Free Humboldt, or Tobacco-Free North Coast, I'm sorry, and the county's program, county, through county public health and environmental health, can assist the city in adopting that policy. So thank you, and Violet.
Hello, my name is Violet Villarreal. I'm so glad to have this opportunity to address the issue of nicotine use among youth in our community. I'm a 10th grader at Arcata High, and I've already witnessed the distressing impacts of nicotine on many of my peers and friends. These lively young individuals are falling into harmful cycles of addiction, and it pains me to see the potential dimmed by this toxic habit. Nicotine has crept into the lives of youth, robbing them of their bright futures. I envision a community where I don't see my classmates missing out on their fullest potential due to this harmful addiction. The time to act is now. I encourage our community to make a commitment to break free from this cycle. I understand it's not an easy task, but it starts with your determination. Let's strive to halt the spread of this problem and prevent future generations from enduring the same struggles. Our collective effort can make a significant difference, and it all begins with you. We call upon the City Council to take proactive measures to combat the rising issue of nicotine addiction among young people. This includes, but is not limited to, increasing educational programs in schools, fostering collaborations with community organizations, and by prioritizing the health and well-being of our youth to create a safer nicotine-free environment for the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, so much for being here. Thank you for all you do. All right, our last proclamation this evening is a proclamation recognizing California Retired Teachers Week, November 5th through 11th, and as a granddaughter and a daughter of retired teachers, and hopefully someday my own retired teacher, I'm happy to read this proclamation. So whereas the California Retired Teachers Association was formed by Laura E. Settle in 1929 at the start of the Great Depression with the goal of relieving the economic hardships suffered by retired teachers, and for 94 years has been a leading advocate for providing teachers with sufficient retirement income. And whereas the California Retired Teachers Association also provides continuing support to active and future teachers, providing grants, scholarships, and donations totaling more than $750,000 a year. And whereas retiree spending from pensions generates $76.1 billion in economic benefits to Californians. And whereas the annual dollar value, more than a million volunteer hours donated by retired teachers throughout the state, reached nearly $39 million during the most recent reporting period. And whereas last year, our North Coast Division donated $12,500 in local grants and scholarships and $250 each to our local museums and the Sequoia Park Education Fund, and additionally volunteered their times in schools, museums, hospitals, the Little Red Schoolhouse, Food Bank, and other community organizations. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata recognizes November 5th through 11th, 2023, as California Retired Teachers Week in Arcata and encourages residents to honor all teachers and acknowledge the vital role that retired teachers fulfill in California communities. So dated November 1st and signed by myself, and I believe Sharon was here earlier. I don't know if she is still here. Is Sharon still here? Okay. We will make sure to get this to her. So thank you so much. All right. That takes us then to our next item on the agenda, which is the Consent Calendar. So all matters on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion, and there is no separate discussion. If discussion is required, the item can be removed and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the Consent Calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for discussion. Item A, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of October 18th, 2023. Item B, biweekly report on disbursements. And item C, amend the contract with Miracle Recreation Play Power Incorporated for Redwood Park playground equipment and servicing purchase installation in the amount of $27,953.21, including tax, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. So are there any council members that would like to remove an item from consent this evening? All right. Is there any members of the public or any public comment on consent items this evening? Not seeing any yet. Is there any online? No. All right. Then I will entertain a motion for the Consent Calendar.
I would so move for approval of the Consent Calendar.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Stillman and a second by Councilmember White. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. And I did just want to thank the Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association. That was pointed out in the staff report that they have done a lot of the groundwork for the pump track, and so, again, another, like, community collaboration that helps us be able to achieve more, so I'm grateful for that partnership and just wanted to acknowledge them.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, motion carries unanimously. We have no old business this evening, so that takes us into new business, which is, our first item is Item A, Adopt Resolution Number 234-18, Declaring a Shelter Crisis in the City of Arcata. Do we have a staff report from city manager?
I do. Thank you, Mayor and council. I mean, I guess like many other places, the City of Arcata has, for a long time, been facing a housing crisis, and as a result, an increase in unhoused population in our community. In 2022, this council set aside a portion of the stimulus funds that we received, often referred to as ARPA funds, to establish and trial a safe parking program. The program is operated by Arcata House Partnership, and it provides space for up to 30 vehicles where residents can safely park their cars, vans, RVs, and then receive services on-site. The program provides charging stations, bathrooms, meals, as well as access to case management services and other community resources. The city and the county has been monitoring the program for the last year and believes that the Safe Parking Program has become more successful and has time to establish itself over the past year. That success has been evident by over 50% of the residents being able to exit the program into more permanent supportive housing environments. However, we knew going into this that the funding that we had was one-time funds that were received as COVID stimulus dollars, and we have been working with Arcata House to try to secure additional grant funds. We have not been able to secure long-term funds, but the county, because of the success of the program of getting individuals into housing, has stepped forward to try to provide as many months and hopefully up to a year of funding for the program. The program grant that they have identified does require the city to make an emergency shelter declaration. I think that your council and the community have, has recognized that this is not a hard declaration for us to make. The declaration of a shelter crisis, what it does is it allows us to streamline some of the regulations in order to provide shelter to those that are unhoused. I think this program, the Safe Parking Program, is a real easy example of that. The declaration will require us to follow some building code on-site, but obviously, a vehicle is not a traditional housing type and would not meet all of the building codes of California as a housing type. So it allows us to relax some of those requirements to provide emergency shelter. And I can talk further, and our city attorney is also online tonight to answer questions specifically about government code sections, if you would like. But the shelter declarations do need to be temporary in nature, and they would need to be renewed. So we're asking for a one-year declaration to allow the continuation of the Safe Parking Program. We can extend that declaration if we can find additional housing and to keep the program going in the future, but this will keep us going for right now. So I'll pause there, but certainly happy to answer more detailed questions.
Great. I will open it up for any questions or concerns from the council.
I had a question, or maybe it's a concern. Yes, definitely, let's do this. My concern is those that do not have a vehicle, campers, have nowhere to go. I know we have an extreme weather shelter, but if you have a canine companion, a pet, then you are literally out in the cold. So I'm hoping somehow, some way, within the 700,000, that we can work in some options for those to do safe camping, and in particular, those who own pets that have no access to an extreme weather shelter.
Yeah, and I think. We are continuing to seek funds that would allow us to expand into that area. We are working with the property owner. The city doesn't own this property. We are leasing it, so we will continue to work with the property owner around the concept of expansion. That is something we're working on. That will not be immediate, so I don't want to share that it will be. We are looking, and we'll talk about extreme weather shelter at a later time, and Arcata House Partnership is here tonight to help answer those questions. We will be looking for sites to try to support individuals with pets as well for that, so.
So there was, we received a letter concerning people that do have vehicles, but those vehicles are not licensed, or do they are registered, and therefore said they don't qualify for the parking program, the Safe Parking Program. So that is something possibly, I'm not too sure, but maybe the organization, some of the organizations out there could actually get into helping with that. I remember that's what Susie Van Kirk used to do. She used to help people get their driver's license and their IDs and so forth, and possibly we have somebody out in our community that would like to do that same thing for these individuals. So that does preclude them from joining the Safe Parking Program, but also there's a limitation on the number of people could be present within that facility.
Councilmember Stillman, I did reach out to Darlene Spoor, Director of the Arcata House Partnership, regarding that specifically because it was my recollection that they did have funds to help people accomplish the goals that you mentioned, and she did affirm that. That is part of what they do upon intake, so, yeah.
And something that I just wrote down, reading through the staff, staff report, is that I would maybe, because I have the same concern as Alex did, just that as, as we continue this funding, to be able to see more support for those with unregistered vehicles and kind of get some data and feedback maybe on, you know, kind of how, how many people have they assisted into getting their vehicles registered or getting licenses, and whether or not, you know, that has been successful, have people wanted to come into the program with that, or has that, you know, pushed people out and to just kind of be able to understand that data a little bit more, and also just the, the issue of people who, who might not be able to get into the program because they're not able to register their vehicle, and then seeing. seeing, you know, vehicles being impounded and people not being able to get access, you know, back to their livelihood, their life, you know, that's in there. And so, being able to work through that and get kind of some numbers back of how many people are we helping with that, and how many people, you know, really have that concern, I think, is some data that we would like to see as we continue to, you know, fund this program.
Could I ask one more question? And this probably isn't under the realm, but, you know, in light of what's happening to the Cal Poly Humboldt students of being unable to park, will there be maybe a way that we can incorporate a place for the Cal Poly Humboldt students perhaps to park there, but maybe, I know sometimes those particular demographics don't necessarily mix well together with the younger students, and just wondering.
Two fronts on that. Yes, certainly, students are admissible into the program. They would just go through that regular channel and stop in at the annex to make that application. We are also actively working with Cal Poly on making sure that outreach is happening. Cal Poly does still have empty beds up on campus, and so making sure that they're outreaching and really working with those students to find housing. So we still have efforts on that realm for those students, but we'll, and I can update you once we kind of conclude those efforts.
So when we declare a state of emergency, that opens us up to be able to apply for state emergency funds as well and keep grants and whatnot, is that something that the staff is looking into?
Yeah, we will continue to look for any grant possible to keep this and more types of programs going. I mean, I think that's what we've, you've seen over the last three years, anyway, around the crisis that we're facing. They're complicated. These programs come with state and federal dollars. They do come with a lot of rules and regulations. It is frustrating. It's frustrating for the individuals trying to get into the programs. It's frustrating for the really wonderful people that work to operate these programs. But they are the dollars that are out there, so we will continue to see, because they are providing good service for a lot of people as well. So I know they're not without challenge, but yes, we will keep looking for those. But this shelter declaration is really very limited right now, just to the Safe Parking Program.
Right, and but it includes day shelter, too, and transportation, too?
No, day shelter, we'll talk about for extreme weather shelter. Yeah.
Any more questions or comments from council, or we'll open it up to public comment as well? Or do you want to go? Yeah. Let's open it up to public comment, and again, I think we have some folks that are new to public comment, so oftentimes, not necessarily a back and forth, but if you do have questions, please list those, and we can kind of try to get you an answer for those, and you'll have three minutes on each agenda item. So if you're interested in commenting on this item, make your way up to the podium, and please, go ahead.
I'm actually, was a resident in the Safe Parking Program, and I was found housing over on Valley West Boulevard for me and my RV. But now, the parking, the place where I'm living is telling me I can't park my RV there. I cannot allow to park my RV there. They approved me and gave me a place, and now they say I can't have it. Okay? I can't park it on the street because they're calling Valley West Boulevard considering it a freeway. So I have to move it every three days, and I can't even park it in the building where I live. What the hell am I supposed to do? They knew I had it when I got there. It's legal, it runs, it's in my name, there's nothing wrong with it. But for them to tell, it's like for them to tell, that's like Danko, like, signing this, going into an agreement with me, and then telling me that you don't allow shoes, or something like that. They knew I had shoes. What the hell is going on? What am I supposed to do? Do I have to...I think they have plenty of space. There's no, it's not like they're out of room in the parking lot. They have plenty of space, and it's just, I feel persecuted. I feel, they should have never offered it to me if this was going to be a condition. But they knew I was coming from Safe Parking. My counselor brought me over from the Safe Parking for RVs. They knew it when I signed the lease agreement. For them to change, to wait until I'm there and then say, oh, you got to get rid of that thing. Now, to be truthful, I'm trying to sell it. I don't know. I no longer need it. I have a place to live. But they're not, it's not something fast enough to suit them. So I have to, I have to play tag. I could play hide and mole with the police on the street. I don't think it's right. It isn't right. What the hell am I supposed to do?
Thank you.
My name is Jammy. Well, I've been a resident, well, houseless resident of Arcata now for about, off and on for the last five years. I lived in Eureka because I was on Cal Works. I am now not on Cal Works, haven't been on Cal Works. I'm a, I'm actually a taxpayer, and I have a family, and I've been trying to get housed for the last five years. They put me in housing. They put me in the Eureka and to Laguna, where I was attacked by the owner there. I was also here, just saying, I came here from Empower Yodel, if you guys know what that is, is a domestic violence shelter. And, but like, I'm getting victimized here. There's nothing, there's no help for me because I work, because I have a job, and I pay taxes and all that, so I don't get assistance. Arcata House knows my name. They know who I am, and I'm not getting no help. Because, I don't know. I try to make appointments with them, do whatever, work on theirs, but I have a job. I don't know. I also do know that there's a lot of promises that were made to people, like, about getting their registration at the Safe Parking, which I want to list there. I don't know why I'm not there yet. But like, they're supposed to be helping with registration and whatnot to get their car legal. It's not happening, though. Not in all cases. And I'm glad there's 50%. It would be nice to have at least a little bit more, 80%. People are getting harassed everywhere, and I know that every situation is the same, but for my situation, and like others, not everyone has a kid out here. I do, though, and my daughter has to suffer with me. Not because of anything we're doing wrong, but if I go and get a motel, know that I can't get housed with these services that they have, because that means I'm able to be housed. If it was that easy, like, I can't make three times the rent, but I know that I'm a good person. I'll make my rent. Can't get that help either. So what am someone like me supposed to do? Or even, it's just sad. I'm watching people go hungry and not have places to go, or being, because they're on alcohol. I see people every day overdosing because they're getting displaced in these encampments. And like, there's ways that we can somehow come together if everyone's not always trying to push each other away. And I don't...
My name is Veronica Chapman, and I'm here to talk about the homeless crisis in Arcata. And I know that you all received my email regarding this, and thank you for responding to me, Councilmember Atkins Salazar. But what I'm here tonight to talk about is, and ask you, is to stop forcing people to move from one illegal place to another. We cannot expect people to move up or on or get the help that they need when they leave their camps or their vehicles, and they come back and they're gone, and their possessions are thrown away, and it just defeats the purpose of trying to, you know, get themselves out of the situation that they're in, because they have to start over. It's one step forward, three steps back. Outreach workers, like Mist, cannot find people. They spend more time looking for people that have been moved than they do providing any services. So we just need to stop doing it until we have enough viable options for people, people with pets, people with vehicles that aren't registered, people that live in tents, to be able to succeed and to get out of the situation. And I have a question, because I really don't know the answer. Why does the city exclusively work with Arcata House Partnership? They are clearly overwhelmed. They, you know, they really have a hard time meeting the needs of all of the people that, you know, that we've got living in the street. And there are other homeless service organizations out there, and I'm wondering why we don't include some of them, for example, AHA. I know that they've submitted a proposal to the city in the past. I have seen their plans and their models that appear to be very viable alternatives for homeless housing. So perhaps you can answer that question for me, not now, sometime soon, because I really would, I'm really curious as to why it's just Arcata House Partnership and not involving other agencies, because clearly, it's not enough now. And so I just want to close with, please, let's just stop moving people once again from one illegal place to another. Every place is illegal, really, where people are. And again, they can't, their stuff gets, I've seen it. I've witnessed this with my own eyes. Their, the police come, their stuff is taken away and thrown away, and so there we, they've missed their doctor's appointment, their DHHS appointment, their mental health appointments, their ID. Anyway, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Go ahead, please. Thank you.
I just want to say I'm all for safe parking. We have an entire city here that could be safe parking. We don't need to spend $6,500 a month to rent out an empty lot that only allows maximum 30 vehicles to park there, and they have to be registered and insured. That is helping such a tiny minority of the unhoused population in Arcata at so much cost. Just stop harassing people in their cars. Stop taking what little shelter people can attain away from them, and stop the sweeps. Okay? Just stop, stop the sweeps. You don't have enough shelter for everyone. What you're doing is illegal. It's unconstitutional. Stop the sweeps and stop taking people's vehicles. That is akin to genocide. It kills people when you take away their shelter and make them move around constantly. Stop the sweeps and stop the theft.
Next speaker, please.
I'm Nezzy Wade, and I am with the organization that Veronica just mentioned. Thank you. Affordable Homeless Housing Alternatives, better known as AHA. And I am all for the city declaring a shelter crisis. We've been around this place a lot of times. We got the, I, my organization and lots of other people together, doing signature drives of over 1,000 people, two times, trying to get the Board of Supervisors to declare a shelter crisis. Same thing with the City of Eureka. They declared a shelter crisis, with the intention that then you can use the government code to have, bend planning codes and ordinances that allow for alternative things that people can have for housing. Safe Parking can be one of those. Tiny Houses can be one of those. Legal Campgrounds can also be shepherded in if you have a shelter crisis. That's why you have emergency zones. Go for it. Don't put a year time limit on it, though. Leave it open so that you can utilize this and you can work with other agencies who can also be eligible for funding and opportunities that can do these things, or provide support services to that. You close the door on a year, and you wait, you're closing everybody out again. It takes a long time, as you know, to get things in the queue, to get funding, to get projects going. It won't work for anyone else. And if you're going to think about doing a shelter crisis, don't do it just for one project, which may be a really good thing. It's a very expensive one. There are many other ways to do it. My heart, I worked at HSU for 26 years. My heart goes out to the Cal Poly students now who are also being forced out of their safe zones because they have no place to park. Parking, it, there are a variety of ways to do this. We've evolved a lot. There's a National Vehicle Residency Collective that people can join and be part of a movement. You could be part of that as well. The point is, is that we need to stop trying to make people, the parking program, all those programs, only move in one direction. People can only go into permanent housing. There has to be some other alternatives. There are people who can live and do, live very comfortably in their vehicles, given safe places to be. And we should think about how we would support that as a community. How would we support people who have RVs instead of taking them away because they can't be maintained or whatever? Maybe there's a way that we can figure out ancillary programs that can help bleed tanks and to keep people safe and be sanitary. There's a lot of things that can happen. There's so much to be said. I'm sorry, we don't have more time. But I really think we should declare a shelter crisis, not leave it for a year. Do what everybody else is doing. When the problem is solved, then you can lift the crisis.
Thank you, Nezzy.
My name is Justin Massey. I'm a 20-year Arcata resident, and like, three years of it, I've been homeless. So can we, first, can you answer the question that she asked about why you only work with the Arcata House?
We can after everybody comments.
Okay.
Or I can at least answer it from my point of view.
Okay. Are you the mayor? Okay, cool. So, yeah, these unregistered vehicles in homes are actively being preyed upon with the, with the Safe Parking, or like, without the Safe Parking Program. Like, the cops sit and wait for people to get out of their cars so they can take them? Like, that's, that's not okay. You know, this is people's homes. It's their, like, all their stuff is in these, in these cars, in these RVs. You know, that's their life, and it's constantly being taken away from them. Me personally, I've had my stuff taken from me 20-something times this year in 2023, everything that I own. So it's insane what's going on here. And the cops are also, the police, excuse me, are also very aggressive and, I feel, I feel discriminated, you know what I mean? Like, they come, me personally, I feel like they constantly harass me, constantly. I got arrested when they were moving me out of my spot, down on the, by the softball fields. They were moving me out of my spot. I spilled an eighth of a cup of laundry detergent, and they took me to jail for an environmental fine, or whatever, which is insane, when two days later, somebody shot up a car while people were sleeping and shot up another car while people were sleeping in them. They found the guy. He had his 14-year-old daughter with him, and all that they did was gave that guy a ticket. I mean, what's going on here? You know? And then, but, you know, it's probably a bias. I'm not sure. But I'm not, you know, like, why? It doesn't make any sense. Like, stop the war on the homeless. It's ridiculous. Like, y'all are completely out of touch. I don't know if y'all know that. But y'all, y'all don't know what's going on here, you know? Like, there's, there's people out there starving. There's people out there freezing. There's people out there, like, sick, you know what I mean? Like, infection, like, all kinds of bad stuff is going on, man, and nobody's doing a goddamn thing about it. You know, like, y'all are out of touch. Like, get out there and sit with the peoples. Take a night out there. How about that? You sit out there for three nights, see how you fare, and then come talk to me. Okay? Thank you. And thank you, Karen. You've been a lot of help. The city manager's been a lot of help to me, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lucy Rids. I've been doing some community outreach for the past year and a half with a thing I made up called the Do Nothing Society, and I have talked to more people than I can even process. And so many people in this community are suffering so badly that it breaks my heart. It is so systemic. These are systemic problems. It is not just in Arcata. It's all through California. It's all through the United States. There are these, we need these lots everywhere. Why is that? Because commercial real estate prices and residential real estate prices have exploded. There is no rent control. There is very little protections for people, and I know more people living in cars than you guys know exist. It is undercounted vastly. And, and it's, it's just so sad. Like, it hurts. It hurts to hold these stories. And, and we need, we need a guaranteed UBI program. Like, there's pilot programs throughout California for people to have at least $1,000 a month as basic income. We can't have people have, like, the floor is at the, there's no bottom right now. It is, it is unbelievable, and the displacement is constant. Like, there cannot be a criminalization of parking your car and sleeping in it. Every, all of Arcata should be able to be slept in. Like, there could be, I have a hammock pod. It can sleep three people. You could set up public hammocks. You could set up, like, there's so many empty commercial real estate places right now because rents are too high, and the idea of going to a store and buying something, no one can afford that. So these... So these stores are collapsing. Like, we are facing Great Depression level, as bad as the Gilded Age level inequality right now. And if we don't face that and create new solutions that are more creative than whatever the hell Arcata House is doing or whatever you guys are doing currently, I understand you're trying, but you're missing the mark. Okay? People are suffering. Winter is coming. I don't even want to be here for winter because I am tired of seeing people sleeping on an icy street when it's wet. It makes me sick to my stomach. I cannot, like, I don't want to live here anymore because of that. And I am afraid, my rent went up this year. Everyone I know's rent went up this year. It's, it's unreal. And I've been talking to so many people. Like, it's not like a one-off. It's everyone. People can't afford food. Even someone that works at the Co-op full-time said, "I, I, I go to work, I come home, I don't have any money to go out." Like, there's a reason all of these restaurants are empty. There's a reason why places are closing earlier. There's a reason why rest, like, small businesses are closing. If we want to be Panera Bread and In-N-Out, fine, but like, we need to help also, last thing, not having criminalizing any sort of street vending. People need access to be able to sell their own goods. Like, stop criminalizing things, please.
I don't really have anything original to add to this conversation. I mean, the statement that I prepared for this evening pales in comparison to the personal testimonies of folks that have lived experience with homelessness. And, and that's the bottom line, just listen to people who are homeless. Listen to them, talk to them, sit with them. I would just like to say, to ask for the City of Arcata to make a stand for its homeless population and stop the sweeps of homeless encampments. These sweeps don't address the root of the housing crisis, and it forces already vulnerable populations into even more dangerous situations. Punitive, coercive, and restrictive measures do not work. Let's come up with more humane and dignified responses to this issue and reduce the stigmatization of homelessness. I'd also like to add that I just, I think it's insane that people are being evicted on stolen land. And you started this meeting with a land acknowledgement and then followed it with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I just think that is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. And it was, and it was completely empty. So that's all I have to say.
Hi, my name is Elijah Martin. I live in Valley West. I don't need three minutes. All I need to say is that I find it despicable that one of the people that sits up there lives in Valley West and doesn't appreciate the fact that some of the people that are homeless up there have no other choice and they don't want to acknowledge it. And so I'm going to sit here and manually say that. I don't, I don't care. I just would like to see that something be done about the police destroying people's camps, tearing them apart when they have nowhere else to go. Okay? That's, that's not right. Like, what are they supposed to do? As one of those people, I've been homeless half my life. And that's wrong to see the cops come down there and just destroy whatever people have. I don't believe in that. Like I said, I didn't need three minutes. That's all I need. I despise that.
My name is Brandy. I also don't need my entire three minutes just to echo what everyone else has said about people being moved from place to place, all their shit being thrown away, their cars being stolen. And it kind of seems like y'all don't remember this, but almost a year ago, like, in a month, it'll be almost exactly a year, someone froze to death on the steps of this building. Kind of seems like y'all don't fucking remember it. And what is different?
Nothing. 30 years ago was the same.
That's all.
They protested.
My name is Mason Harris. I'm somebody that I'm not from California or Arcata. This isn't my homeland or my home territory, but this has become a place where I call home, where I recognize the beauty and learning about being Native American, learning about other cultures and other races and other aspects of life, you know? I'm, I'm somebody that has been homeless. I'm somebody that also has been in a home and has a college education and values somebody that does work and, and having those opportunities in the county that are readily available. It's, if somebody wants to get aggressive, then go get it, you know? And I want to recognize that everybody saying that there's nothing that's being done about being homeless, there's a lot that's being done about being homeless. There's outsourced resources where I volunteer at that are continually helping out with that. There's other outside agencies in Shasta County that are helping out with that. Now, you've got a dynamic in this, in this, in this town where there's a lot of brilliant people here, a lot of amazing people. And one thing I don't think anybody recognizes is, you know, you have, you have, you have to complain about what's going on this evening. Well, I think the complaint is not giving enough recognition to you, to each other, not picking up somebody when they're, they're having a rough day. And I think, think you, isn't, isn't being implemented enough in this town, you know? What do you, what's not being done about people not being homeless? Well, help them out, help them pay their bill. How do you, how do you get them to pay their bill? Well, come to work, let me show you. Put them on your arm, take them there, show them, show them a better way. And I think right now, it really shows that we haven't done enough, but we're doing everything we can. Well, someone was, what, frozen a year ago? I was frozen four days ago. Let me, let me tell you, negative 30 degrees, you know what that taught me? Gratefulness. Being thankful for the opportunities that I have and the little things that I cherish in my life. And sometimes we don't get enough of that, enough of another thank you and enough of thank you, God, or, you know, I'm just saying in our own, in our own capacity. I just want to recognize that and I just, I just want to speak to those, those things that are being done and that are being helpful and to recognize that we need to continue on that path. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Marlon Jones II. I'm not from here. I'm from Milwaukee, Wisconsin. I've had the pleasure of living here for two years. I work at Cal Poly Humboldt as a custodian. And much like everybody else, I've seen my share of just the worst times. I'm thankful for this place, but I'm not in love with all of it. And I feel like this is a small enough community that cares about each other enough as human beings that it can change. I don't know what's going on with the rest of the US, but I know that everybody has work to do. And I feel like here we can really cover a lot of ground with the homeless crisis. The housing crisis is, and it's insane. I've had friends who moved into a house and their landlord charged them $5,000. And they're all, they're all students. And when asked, "Why did you charge us so much?", he said, "That's the highest amount I can charge you legally." So we need a cap on, on the rent. It's, it's ridiculous. I've never seen rent get lowered. I've only seen it get increased. I've never seen it stay stagnant. That has to be a thing. People don't have enough money to eat, let alone pay their rent, let alone get their car fixed, let alone do anything for themselves. So that's a, that's a big concern right now, I think, for everybody. Two, I, I had the pleasure of working with Ms. Charmaine Lawson, whose son, David Josiah Lawson, was murdered, who was a Cal Poly student. And I know a lot of those students on campus by name, by face, and a lot of them are homeless. And it shouldn't be like that. I think Cal Poly is failing them. I think Arcata is failing them. That's not their fault. It's not on them. Their lives, too, when they get here, there's not enough room for them. And that, there's something that needs to be done about that as well. I'm not a philanthropist. I'm not Bruce Wayne. I've been trying to look into land in McKinleville so that I can build something for the students, get a shuttle system for them so they, they can go from McKinleville to Cal Poly Humboldt. It's rough right now. It's hard to do for one person. I'm trying to get help. I, I feel like everybody would benefit just right now from, from kindness and understanding and really putting yourself in the other person's shoes because it's rough out there. I know a lot of those homeless people by name. I see them every day when I walk outside. I, I see a few homeless people that have been at the point of freezing to death. And I was thankful Ms. Charmaine does co-drives for them around this time of year so that people can try to stay warm, try to survive through the winter. And I know that you guys are doing your best, and I appreciate that, but I really feel like you guys, you gotta do more than your best right now. The community's hurting, and we need you more than ever. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Sir, I believe you already spoke, so can we hear from the? Okay, can we hear from the, the person behind you, please? Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Can we hear from our next speaker, please?
I'm nervous, and I am sometimes not really sure where to start with the way I think about things and stuff. My name's Kala. When I first got here, I know this is maybe a little off-topic, I would be like, "Well, how does a mess happen?" And like, and then like, no, now I get it. And like, I had to come here to get Humboldt and stuff. One of the things I would ask that, it's, I'm not very good about this kind of stuff, but what about this thing that they, he just approved, the governor guy? The new part where there is a, it's like, yes, in my backyard that like rezones the, for the churches and their lots and the nonprofit, like, whatever religious places to like be able to be places for the houseless or whatever? And I don't really remember what else I was gonna say. Now I'm super nervous. Yay! But I think there was something else, but I'm not really sure. And if I remember, I'll say it then. Is that okay? Okay, never mind.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Bean. I speak with a lot of that houseless community on a daily basis here. I currently have home, and I'm grateful for that. But I honestly, I, I worry about people that I have gotten to know about them freezing to death. I know a 72-year-old man that sleeps in front of a liquor store that was covered in his own urine. And I went in politely to the business owner and explained I wasn't sure what to do. I've spent the last three days trying to problem solve with Arcata House Partnership, small business owners. I'm not sure. I feel at a loss. I've been told that maybe trying to collaborate and working between multiple entities could help move getting this man housed up, but currently he's concerned he has bugs. So now with the one shower that's available on Wednesday and the treatment that he's needing to become socially integrated would be a three-day treatment. When there's only a shower on Wednesday, and I don't know why HA AHA has removed themselves from participating, that was not disclosed to me when I was questioning that, but I have heard that they have not been a participant for at least almost a year now. And as another speaker said, I do not want to see another person freeze to death on the city stairs, in the square, or anywhere else. If I'm a property taxpayer and I have children that I'm raising in this community, to show a model of dignity and human kindness, I cannot walk past these people and worry about them freezing to death. I don't know what needs to be moved forward to implement this emergency shelter. I would hope that the safe housing parking was actually safe and people could get into it quickly and expedited in a reasonable way. I'm concerned that maybe there's not cameras up. I have heard that people have had their cars stolen from that facility. You shake your head, "No", but have you gone and spoken to those people, everyone who has experienced being there? Because there might be that one person. So you shake your head, but until you're that person that's squatting down next to the man that people don't want to get near because he reeks of urine, I want everybody to be able to come to Arcata and enjoy its splendor. There's amazing activities that go on. And I don't want my child to be afraid to go to the square because she's worried about the health and well-being of a community member.
Thank you.
Hello. This is my first Arcata City Hall meeting that I attend, and I just want to say that I feel like deeply embarrassed at like the lack of action by the city council. I'm used to going to city council meetings in the metropolitan area city where I was from. And I don't know, it's just crazy to me, like, I don't know, I'm just confused to like who exactly you guys are catering to. Because I haven't seen, like, I haven't heard a single person today, my first time coming, and this is unusual, like, I haven't seen a single person speak against the houseless population, not a single person. So, and like, there's people dying outside. I'm just, who are you guys catering to? Like, who do you guys want to vote for you? Who, who is it? I want you guys to like think about it and like answer it, because like, again, it's like this is my first time coming here, and I don't think you guys are catering to me, especially after hearing everything here. I don't think anybody here is like compelled for, by you guys. Like, I'm just legitimately confused. Like, who, who are you guys trying to appeal to? How is it possible that like a person died, like, is like froze to death, like, right outside? I'm just confused, like, what is going on here? Like, I'm just, I'm just really confused right now. Like, I'm, again, and it's like, not a single person, not a single person has spoken in opposition of the houseless population. That is so unusual, like, not a single person. So I'm like, who, who is it? Who do you guys want to vote for you? Like, who, who is, I don't want to say, I don't want to assume, but who is paying you guys? Like, seriously?
Hi, my name's Tanya. I'm a registered nurse. I work in this community. I also do volunteering and direct street outreach. I have a public health certification on my nursing license, and I want to acknowledge that this is a public health crisis. Especially, I agree with the, the motion to promote emergency shelter declaration. I think that's very necessary. I also think we need to expand services beyond Arcata House Partnership, and I also think we need to promote housing-first policies. And I wanted to highlight how sweeps, in particular, how they affect people's health. So when sweeps are happening, when people are being moved around, when people don't have a stable place where they can be found or contacted, this prevents access to their healthcare. It prevents access to medications. It prevents access to mental health care, which we are already seriously lacking in this county, as I'm sure you are all well aware. Without housing and with sweeps happening, I can't find my patients. I can't get the medications. I can't assess them. I can't lay eyes on them. I can't listen to their lungs. I can't take their blood pressure. I can't provide them medications. I can't provide them wound care. I have seen people lose limbs that are, it is completely unnecessary because they can't access wound care, they can't get antibiotics, they, their minimal marginal housing is swept or they're moved around, they lose their meds, they don't have a ride to the pharmacy, they can't get to DHHS to get their insurance card. These are all completely preventable occurrences, and it puts a huge strain on our healthcare system, which is already under a tremendous amount of stress, as I'm sure you're aware, since the pandemic. So I have seen people freeze, I have seen people lose limbs, I have seen people overdose, I have seen people have strokes, I have seen people get COVID, I have seen people die from cancer that is completely treatable because they cannot access chemo, because they need a house to stay in while they're going, undergoing cancer treatment. And that's not a one-time occurrence. So people have literally died over this, and these crises are completely preventable, and I urge you to invest in not just an emergency shelter declaration, but housing-first policies across the board. Thank you.
Hi, I'm back. I want to speak in my role as rabbi. On the holiest day of the On the holiest day of the year in the Jewish calendar, we spend 25 hours fasting, asking for forgiveness for our personal sins, the sins of our community. I have, on that day, I have the task of reading from the prophet Isaiah, who asks a very simple question. He says, "Is this the fast I choose, where you just stop eating?" He says, "No, the fast that I choose is to take the homeless into your home, to feed the hungry, to clothe the naked." So that's the fast that I choose. I think you guys are doing the best you can, there's always more that you can do. And I commend you for constantly looking for the funding to keep going with these programs, which are swallowing so many people. We've heard from so many people tonight, I just want to say, keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more in-person public comment before we move online for this item? Item A. All right, do we have any? It is about resolution 234, declaring a shelter crisis in the city of Arcata for this particular item, yes.
All right, first public comment is Jane, go ahead Jane.
Hi, it's Jane Woodward and I simply want to acknowledge that everything I've heard tonight is extraordinarily distressing to hear and understand. And I read the article in the paper this morning about Kyle Poly evicting its people from its parking, which I didn't quite understand what the rationale was, aside from they were messy. So I really do suggest that you do as much as you can in terms of, obviously, pass a shelter crisis. And I agree with Nezzi that it shouldn't have a time limit at this stage. Declare it, get the funding wherever you can get it to help address these issues. I know Nezzi and others, and Arcata House Partnership is working its tail off to try to service as many people as it can. If they can get additional funding, that would be fantastic because they do so much already, but there's not enough of them. So can we try to get a volunteer effort together? We have volunteer efforts to take care of our trails, we have volunteer efforts to do all kinds of things, put on festivals, et cetera. Maybe we can get Habitat for Humanity to get in here and help build tiny homes. Maybe we can invest in more of these, what they have in Eureka, these containers that can be turned into temporary homes. Maybe it would be worthwhile to try to get trailers from Homeland Security or wherever we need to get them and find a place to put them where people can come and be safe. Maybe we should need to set up big tents somewhere where people can at least get in, under shelter. But there are things we can do and things we should consider and I'd love to see us go forward with all due speed because it's gonna rain for the next five days and it's at least going to be warm, it's gonna be low 60s, so they won't freeze. But nonetheless, you don't do well when you're soaking wet. So I hope you proceed with this declaration and put together a committee, commission or whatever you need to put together in order to work with everyone to try to address this problem, because it's huge and it's affecting our economy, it's affecting our humanity. And I grieve to see what's going on and we aren't adequately able to address it so far. So what's, maybe we need a special commission to get going on this problem and work with everybody we can to get all the funding we can, find the places to do it and make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you Jane. Any other speakers online? No other online speakers. Okay. And just to address the question about AHA and Nezzi, you can call out if I'm mischaracterizing this, but you know, we had multiple conversations last spring when we were trying to, you know, generate some ideas, working with an interfaith group with people with access to property in churches. And I know that the new kind of order from the governor is going to be able to change a lot of the uses of those properties as well, which is really great. And I think there's a lot of, you know, members of our local faith community that are interested in maybe using some property that way. But, you know, and again, Nezzi, you're out there somewhere, call me out if I'm mischaracterizing this, but from our conversation, it sounded to me that, you know, you guys were discouraged by the previous city council kind of shooting down your idea for a tiny home village and haven't, you know, felt comfortable or supported bringing something like that back. And I just want to say that, you know, there are five new people up here on this dais that are, you know, hoping to work with community groups that want to bring forward some of these solutions and look to ways that we can either help fund or help, you know, offer space or at least, you know, work and make those connections to be able to bring a space where something like that could happen and look at some of those more creative solutions. I'm not supposed to let you do this, but I'll give you just a quicker second to respond to that because I appreciate you being here and wanting to speak to it.
...of the shelter crisis and the sweeps, because I've been watching this, I've been involved in it very deeply for a very long time. After the meetings that we had, there were two, and there was a promise that there would be some kind of engagement with the faith community and that Arcata House Partnership would help us and so forth. None of that happened. I don't get my phone calls answered. There has to be some level of commitment. I mean publicly it all, publicly it all sounds, no, wait, publicly it all sounds great, this happens all the time, publicly it sounds great, there's a commitment, like we gotta do this, and then the follow-up is like a closed door. And that can't continue at every level because no one else is going to get to participate. And we would love to do, we would love to partner. The only way we can do this is through collaboration, you cannot do it independently. When we came here before, we were shut down by the city council basically, because they wanted us to have a million dollars in hand. And we were in the bind that, you know, you, you can't get the money unless you have the property or, you know, we just could not get your property, we could not get money because we didn't have a place to do this. Guarantee some of those places, we'll work, work on getting the places, we'll work on creating the supports and working with the people. But we, we need, we need a level of commitment at every level, at the highest level in the county to the lowest level in the cities and unincorporated areas. We just, we can't do this by ourselves, you can't do it by yourself as a city council, we can't do it by ourselves as AHA, we can't do it by ourselves as Arcata House Partnership, no matter how much money, how many people, or how many things you try. And, and if you do try things and they don't work out or they're not done well, there's no reason to keep doing them over and over again just to get the money. The money needs to be distributed in a variety of ways so that the diversity and the creativity that's out there that can adapt to what's actually evolving in this country is really important. So I would just encourage you to have, not just hold the conversation, but make the commitment to actually act on the things that happen and, and oversee and foresee that, that it might need that kind of guidance.
Okay, thank you Nezzi. I'll answer your, I'll answer your phone calls, so call me. All right, any other comments or questions or responses from the council? Yeah, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say I would be delighted to work with Nezzi Wade with AHA. Status quo is not working. I love what Jane Woodward said, the idea of Habitat for Humanity or other creative ideas to bring in tiny homes, container homes. I'm all for legal camping. I do think it would be good to have a committee or a task force that included the unhoused. They're the stakeholders, we need to hear your voices. And, and I don't, I probably shouldn't do this, but I just wanted to say something to, I think it's Eliza Martin, I don't know you by name, but I know so many people out in Valley West by name and they know me by name and I am boots on the ground. And I am out there feeding the unhoused as a volunteer. I gave out more tents and tarps and sleeping bags out in Valley West, more than I could count. I have never, ever missed a holiday meal out there, I am a single mom. I don't get rich being up here, believe me. I barely take home $500 a month. So just, just to say that, I guess, you know, I did take a little bit of offense that there was a council member who lived in Valley West who didn't care. I also, my other hat is CUNA, Community United of North Arcata, which is Community United of North Arcata. We were a volunteer grassroots group to build a better represented Valley West and thriving Valley West and we are doing good things, so please come join us in this endeavor. I also want to say that we represent all the community, in particular the unhoused community, because you are our neighbors. I do my best, I will say that. You know what, we need to do better. I absolutely agree with you. What we're doing is not working. I don't want to see another friend, somebody that I know by name, and whether I knew them by name or not, they're still human beings. I don't want to see people die. Pops was one of my neighbors, he was in a wheelchair, he had diabetes, he died alone like a frozen popsicle out in Carlson Park and that is unacceptable to me. So I just want you to know that we do care and we will be making changes, at least I'm gonna do my part. Sounds like we have another council member who's ready to move forward and start doing things a little differently, because again, what we're doing is not working.
Thank you Kimberly. Any other questions or comments from the council or we can entertain a motion on this resolution?
Can I just add quickly, just for clarification, a year is the longest the state will allow us to declare the shelter emergency right now. So other communities that have, they continue to do it year after year, we can do that as well. But we did ask for the maximum, just so people know.
Thank you Karen. All right, so again, do we have a motion on the table to move forward with resolution number 234-18, declaring a shelter crisis in the city of Arcata?
Since I've never made a resolution before, I'd love to do that if that's okay with you Alex. I would like to move to adopt resolution number 234-18, declaring a shelter crisis in the city of Arcata.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously, thank you. All right. That will now take us to, unless, yeah, okay, that will now take us to our next item. Item B, consider funding support for extreme weather shelter services between November 15th, 2023 and March 15th, 2024. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, and I would like to invite up, if she's still here, Darlene Spohr, the executive director of Arcata House Partnership to help answer questions. This item before you tonight is just to share with the council what we have been able to put into place this year for extreme weather shelter options. The council had set aside $30,000 in our budget this year to support extreme weather shelter. As has been talked about a little bit this evening, there was a series of a couple of meetings that were brought together with some of the faith-based partners. I know there were several other members of the council and staff that made dozens of phone calls looking for sites that could be available. We have found a few partners within the faith-based community and we have found a potential partnership with the Veterans Hall here in Arcata to trial a system this year that will allow for a warming shelter during the day and overnight shelter at a couple of spaces. I mean, things, things might rotate through a few different facilities. So the plan, the best plan we have been able to come up with this year is that we will do intake through the annex, through Arcata House Partnership, they will provide showers, they will provide meals, they will provide clothing, they will provide, you know, some laundry tokens and support, and then they will provide transportation. If you need night shelter, you would be sheltered either with one of the faith-based partners or at the Grove. We are looking at also some overload shelter potentially at Safe Parking, we're working through some of those dynamics right now. And then for day services, again, will be either at one of the faith-based partners or potentially at the Veterans Hall, but all of that information will be housed at the annex, so people would have one stop, one place to go to know where shelters would be open that evening and be able to receive transportation to and from those sites and support services. I did also want to share with the council, so we're asking that you put that $30,000 towards those programs. It may fund staff at the night shelter, it might fund food at the day, the warming shelter. We have a lot of interested nonprofits that will help support with food in, in those sites and we'll just continue to build on that and look forward to really giving you a report at the end of the season as to what partners came together and what we were able to provide. It is substantial, it's not enough, I get that, but it is substantially more than we were able to provide last year. So I feel like it is a small step in the right direction. I will like to share with the council, I think another step in the right direction, which is, may feel a little bit governmental, but the county has taken some initiative this year. They are holding weekly meetings with all of the extreme weather service providers and shelter service providers to be able to share resources. The county has purchased ahead of time supplies for dispersment into shelters or onto the streets for people that are still unable to, to find the right space to come into shelter that night. And so that weekly coordination with service providers, I think will start to share some stories and start to build some collaboration. The city of Eureka is strongly at that table, they're going to be providing services, I think, very similar, but at a little larger scale as a larger city. In Eureka, we had representatives from Southern Humboldt, they were also on that call this week, this was the first one, so it is just a start. And, and I know that Arcata House is also working with some folks up in McKinleville. Right now, I think those folks would probably be coming down to our services here, but we're looking on trying to identify sites that would also be a hub up in that area. So I'm thankful the county is stepping up to try to at least start with some of that coordination so that we can build these programs. But with that, I'm happy to invite Darlene, if there's anything that I missed that you wanted to share. I think the cost of, you might want to share what we think the cost of this program will be. We know that the $30,000 doesn't cover it, Darlene has found at least, I think, $35,000. She also found about $20,000 to fill in the pool at the Grove to even be able to have an indoor site that is better equipped this, this year for night shelter. But we will, you know, keep looking for things. So with that, if I missed anything, Darlene, or we're both here for questions.
Thank you. I'm so excited to have an opportunity to present to you and for the, for the support that you've given us, Arcata House Partnership and all of the partners that we work with on extreme weather shelter. We aren't in this alone, we have generally about 12 partners that work with us, from faith-based partners to other community organizations around extreme weather shelter. We know how difficult it is to be out there, we understand, our staff understand, they're the ones out there interacting with people every day. They're the ones that know that there is a need greater than we can possibly fund and provide support for. But what we can do this year is we can provide some extreme weather shelter to, during the day, we're thinking 35 to 50 people during a warming center, which is very different, we've never been able to do that before. And we're grateful for the partnership from the Veterans Hall and members. We're thinking that we can provide around 25 beds per night on the days that we call extreme weather shelter, and there's very specific criteria. I predict that before we finish the winter, we'll be able to have gathered enough funding to, to support 40 nights of extreme weather shelter, that's my goal, that should get us through. Does that mean that there's going to be nights that are cold and wet and we're not having extreme weather shelter? Yes, this is not going to be every day between November 15th and March 15th, for a couple of reasons. First of all, there's just not enough funding and support and I wish there was. And we need volunteers and we need volunteers, we need volunteers. The way we're gonna do it this year is very different and we're doing it this way for the first time, we're gonna have people on days that it's called, we're gonna put the word out everywhere to the police, to the media, to all of our partners, that it's gonna be happening and we're coordinating this countywide, which is very exciting, we've never done that before. We'll have opportunities to be able to see who's got open beds at any given day, maybe it's Arcata House Partnership, maybe it's Betty, maybe it's The Mission, maybe it's the city of Eureka or Garberville or Redwoods Rural, we're all working together to do this. And we'll be able to, if our beds are full, we can see if Arcata or if Eureka's got a bed. So this is a very exciting opportunity for us, I'm happy that we can be part of this. Again, on the days that it's called, from nine to four, will be intake at the annex at 501 Ninth Street. People can come there, they can get showers, they can get some clean clothes, they can get access to services there. There's a warming center that will be from 11 to four, 11 to six, where people can get lunch and dinner. And then at 6 o'clock, the, the sleeping shelter will open, 6:00 PM to 11:00 AM, and we'll transport people to that location wherever that is. We're also looking right now, I think we've identified nine beds that can have pets, because we know how important it is for identified nine beds that can have pets, because we know how important it is for people who have animals and pets. So we've identified, right now, I think, nine beds for people with pets to come in off the street during extreme weather shelter. So thank you for your support in all that we do. A thank you to all the organizations that we work with in Arcata and Eureka across the county. We can't do this alone. We need volunteers. We need, I wish we could do more, but every dollar that comes in, the city has allowed organizations like us, and not just us, to do the very best we can. Questions?
Yeah. Do we have any questions from the council for Darlene?
I was going to mention that you're going to be providing Thanksgiving dinner and how many turkeys and pies you need. Maybe you want to mention that?
Sure. We're providing Thanksgiving dinner only to the people we serve, not to the community this year, because the number of people we've served has just increased so dramatically. So we're planning on Thanksgiving dinner for 300 people who are people we serve. And so, yes, any support that people want to provide, turkeys, pies, vegetables, volunteer time is always appreciated.
I think you said 30 turkeys and 80 pies?
Yes, 30 turkeys and 70 pies and copious amounts of vegetables and salad and bread and all of the things that we all enjoy. And volunteer time. Can you tell? We need volunteers.
Could I ask a question? I don't want to put you on the spot, but if we were to raise funds, would it be possible to feed those who are not being served under that umbrella? Because those are the people that need it the most, and I personally will volunteer.
So when I say people we serve, I don't just mean people we have housed. It can be people in our shelter. It can be people on the street. It can be people in the car park. Families for sure. Anyone who's working with our staff, and we have access to them, and we will absolutely serve them.
Thank you for that clarification. And those that are listening, please go sign up and be volunteer. I'll see you there.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Darlene?
I would really love to see Fortuna and Ferndale step up and do their part as well. Thanks to Eureka, McKinleville, and Arcata.
All right. So yeah, not seeing any other questions directly from us. I'll invite public comment now on this item. So if you do have a public comment regarding this item, please make your way to the podium. You'll have three minutes. If there's any public comment on this item.
I'm just curious to the lady from Arcata House, where did that 19 million go that they were granted? Like, I mean, they didn't build anything. Where's the money? I've been told that it's gone. So where'd the money go? Do you guys even ask questions like that? Like, is that something that y'all are concerned with? Like, that's, what the, like, what? You know what I mean? Y'all be, come on, man. It doesn't take 19 million to fill in a fucking pool and to fucking change the name on something and put a fence up outside of a Days Inn, all right? Excuse my language. I'm sorry. But it doesn't. Like, where did the money go? Like, it's not, 170 people have been housed through them. That's it? Like, come on, man. It's not, y'all got some stuff to figure out, but it's not, like, come on. You can do better, right? Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any more, yeah, comment on this item? Please line up.
I was just wondering if the threshold for the emergency shelter could be raised so that, I forget what the temperature threshold is, but it seems, it seemed to me to be low. So if there's some way to just increase that a couple of degrees, because when it's raining in the 30s, it's cold.
I guess I just want to add that I think people maybe should start considering how they can make a contribution. I'm hearing a lot of critics and criticism. I think that's really important for problem solving. But from also feedback that I got from Arcata House, they haven't had clean male pants all year in sizes 30 to 34. Why are we sending these people to get a shower when there's no clean clothing to put on after that? So maybe this is just adding into my friend's problem of not being able to do the self-care that he needs to then get into a public place of service. Nobody will accept him with bugs. Where are the clothing? Where, so maybe also, I think it's Saturday on the 4th, that they're requesting volunteers. So maybe if more people showed up with their old pants or whatever it is. There's lots of female clothes that get donated, but there's a lot of men that don't have clean clothing to change into. Just consider that. How can you help, whatever little thing it is, taking the food out of your pantry and handing it to the person you see on the sidewalk, going through your old clothes and showing up at the Arcata House and donating your stuff from 9:00 to 2:00 or whatever it is? Even if it's an hour of your time, get the chance to meet the people in your community, like someone else said. Spend the time to actually see why these people might actually be using drugs or alcohol. Sometimes it's just to keep themselves awake all night because they're afraid they're going to get raped or injured, or they're so cold that the only thing they can do is drink themselves to sleep because they're in pain, and it's the only way that they can survive. Consider donating your clothes and your time. I realize you guys are doing as much as you possibly can, and I appreciate the collaboration and whatever kind of communal creative efforts we can work together and make this better place for everyone.
Thank you. We'll take our next speaker, please.
Hi. So I sit on the Executive Committee of the Humboldt Housing and Homeless Coalition alongside a representative from Arcata House Partnership. When the extreme weather sheltering came up as a topic, Arcata House Partnership are the only organization that's receiving that funding. There's been a lot of talk from them about sharing in the work, calling for volunteers, but no talk. In fact, I asked them directly because I know of an organization that shelters people during extreme weather and has a hard time finding the funds to even feed people when they're there. But there's no funding, no sharing of that funding coming from Arcata House Partnership. So if people want to volunteer, please consider volunteering for one of these organizations that doesn't have the funding and is just doing it to make sure that people don't die. And what this gentleman back here asked about Arcata House Partnership, where is the money? I ask that pretty much every time with anything that has to do with them. We have The Grove up there, 54 units, $14.1 million to purchase it. That's $261,000 per unit that isn't even a proper studio, and they're allowed to charge rent every month that is being paid by those tenants in part and by the public in part. It's unsustainable. We're just bleeding money toward them. And where is it? Where is it? They can't even pay people to staff the emergency shelter that they're being funded for.
I'm all, I am, Darlene. I am Jammy Holmes. I'm sure you heard my name. I've been on your guys' list. I am part of your guys' singing. I'm still not housed. I'm still not getting enough help because I work. I work. I work. I work. I also work with every personnel here that's houseless. I see on a daily them starving, hungry, but because they might be drunk or they smell like urine to go to the hospital. Bernie can't go to the hospital, get on the bus sometimes because he smells like urine. I do my best to share with people what's going on. But look, the fact is, I am that mother, family. I have a husband and daughter, and I'm struggling. Like, I don't get assistance whatsoever. I pay for my food. I pay for the neighbor or bring somebody to eat. Like, I have, I don't know what else to do. Like, I've been crying for help the last, like, few years, and it's like, I would love to volunteer in every kind or anything that has to do with homeless people because it's not fair. They're not being treated like humans. And it sucks the fact that they get turned away if they do have alcohol on their breath. But you got to remember, it's freezing cold. What else are they going to do? So these people are getting, like, attacked while they're sleeping. They do drugs to stay awake because somebody needs to stay awake, not all of them. So like, the idea that everyone houseless is doing drugs is not the truth. Know that. Some people like to carry Narcan to make sure their neighbor doesn't overdose because they, neighbor chooses to do Fentanyl. It sucks. I know it sucks. We, I know that. I go out there and pick up needles. I know lots of people that go pick up needles. It wasn't our needles, but we're picking it up. Trash cans. Showers, please. I haven't had a shower in, like, weeks, but I work, so I get a chance to go to take a bird bath in my work. Sorry. But I don't have any other options. I have no options. I work when these times are, like, for me to go take a shower. I can't get there. What am I supposed to, like, I don't, I'm part of Arcata's roster of people that they're supposed to be helping, but I'm still not housed, and I'm still not frigging in Safe Parking. Please. I mean, like, use my face now. And I'm with your frigging clients every day. I work, talk with Kevin, talk with Remy and all them. I'm not, still. I'm not getting no kind of help. I can't get no help from the welfare because I'm not on welfare. I don't know what to do. I'm willing to help in any way possible with you guys, if you're willing to make a change, whatever it has to do. Come on.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and I'm so grateful that people showed up tonight on this important issue. I'm very concerned, and I'm very glad to see that we're dealing with this issue on November 1st as opposed to December, whatever it was, the days after Nancy Barnes died at the doors of City Hall. And I think one of the things I've noticed having worked at the extreme weather shelter last year out at Safe Parking and up at The Grove briefly when I was there in February when we had the snow, the problem with the limitations on extreme parking with temperature, it has to be a certain amount. It has to be a few days of rain. I mean, people are talking already about it's going to be raining for five days straight, starting tomorrow. I'm worried about the people tomorrow and what they're going to do. And I continue to wonder why the resources of our city, such as the Community Center and the D Street Neighborhood Center, cannot be used in emergency situations such as what we are going to be dealing with very, very soon. And it's very fine and wonderful that the Veterans Hall has come forward and that other agencies and organizations are there for you. But we, as the city of Arcata, have resources that we can use. And I know that there are people who are willing to volunteer. When I called out on Nextdoor in the January Extreme Weather Shelter, needing, asking people to help for food and supplies and things like that, because I put $200 of my own money helping people out there for those four days that they were there. And the thing is, people want to help. They just need to be asked and not at the last minute. You know, we can do this as a community, as the city of Arcata. You, as the leaders, can make the decision to use our resources that we have, you know, already there with kitchens and bathrooms and heaters and, you know, spacious floors, the D Street Neighborhood Center, the Community Center. And I'm sorry if some people, you know, can't use it for that period of time, but this is an emergency. We've just declared it. So we can use our resources and we can get the community to help. We just need the will to ask for the help and to sacrifice our resources for the greater good.
Thank you, Joanne. All right. Not seeing any other in-person comment. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Go ahead, Jane.
Good evening again. I really do think you need to set up a task force. We've had very successful task forces before, as we did for the Plaza. And there were some very fine people on it at the time who were very engaged, and the city took leadership of that and had very well, had it very well staffed, as well as facilitated. And we got a lot of work done. We had a report, but the point was, we were able to address the issues at the time and continue to follow. But there's no reason we can't do these things. We should be looking at things like how to set up the Community Center so that it can serve as an overnight shelter indoor with heat. We can take the stands down for goodness sake. If nothing else, people can lie on the stands and sleep. But we could also set up a big tent in the field and get, and rent chairs to put in it to keep people warm. I don't know what that costs. I have no idea. But I think ideas like that can be explored and should be. We do have any number of public facilities that can be made available if we take that decision. So I encourage you to get a group of people together. We had Arcata representative from Arcata House Partnership on our last task force on the Plaza. And people who are very concerned and very interested should be able to engage. So I hope you'll set up such a task force and really see what resources we can make available, not just on a long-term basis as well as a short-term basis. This deserves serious consideration. Thank you very much.
No other online comment. Thank you. And just to add to Jane's point, and I think, you know, a couple of other people brought this up too. I mean, so we have a Housing and Homeless Services Working Group, and I would like to ask them the question. I believe Kimberly's on that. I think another one of our council, or just one council member is on that. And just to, you know, ask maybe and direct that group to kind of reevaluate who's part of that group, to add, you know, if we are, you know, talking about expanding, you know, working with other service providers, you know, are those service providers included on the list? Can they make those meetings? Are outreach workers at those meetings? Are members of the homeless community at those meetings? And so to kind of maybe diversify the stakeholders in that group to be able to, you know, kind of start coming up with these creative solutions that we're talking about and working a little bit more towards that rather than just the, you know, the updates of here's what we're doing, but being able to use that group as a platform of here's what we should be doing as well. And so I'd like to, you know, see that and hear back from staff and our council members that are part of that group on that.
I'm a member of that also. But it's, you're service workers that work Open Door Clinic, the county, and so forth, and they work together coordinating, trying to figure out how to make services better. And so it may not be exactly the group that you should be. You know, Kimberly, maybe she has the group. She's going to pull together a group that has a different focus. But I think this group has a very definite, you can correct me, Karen, but they have a very definite focus right now of providing services and keeping each other informed of what they're all doing.
So I don't know what the constraints are with the homeless housing working group that I'm the city liaison for. We may or may not be able to bring in some of the stakeholders of the unhoused. I don't know what the protocol is. I would like to bring in other organizations so that we can have a more of a, you know, a beehive of ideas. And I would absolutely be willing to do a group that is separate from that. I don't like to duplicate, but if for whatever reason this has constraints, I think it's really important that we bring in the community. I wanted to be on that group several years ago, but I was told it wasn't for the public. So let's get a public task force for the unhoused, invite the unhoused, and invite the other community members in there.
So I think it has to be a separate kind of, I would hate to sort of ruin what they have actually going with the homeless and housing group. And what you're talking about is different.
It seems we're dancing on the line of basically adding a new agenda item, which I don't want to do, but hearing maybe a little bit of consensus and direction, and this is something I'd like to talk to you, city manager, a bit more about, just because... City Manager, a bit more about just because we declared an emergency tonight. And so I think maybe having a task force that can help address that emergency or working with our existing groups to be able to bring in some more stakeholders could be, you know, really beneficial. Yeah, thank you. All right. Do we have any other questions or comments from the council here on item B? Considering this funding for Extreme Weather Shelter Services.
I'm interested in moving this item forward and to allocate the 30,000 that we budgeted in the 2023, 2024 fiscal year to support local extreme weather shelter options.
I will second that. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Do we need to take a break? Do we need a break? Quick five-minute break and we'll come back for our remainder items.
Alex.
Okay. And we're back. All right. That takes us to item C on our agenda this evening, which is to adopt resolution number 234-16 to authorize a $150,000 loan to Arcata House Partnership for pre-development study and acquisition and development of affordable housing at 3605 Hinden Road. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I will start by bringing some general information to you that has to do with both projects, just to orient you to both this item and the next item, to orient you to the background of the permanent local housing allocation. And also to talk a little bit about, you know, where our affordable housing projects are, just to orient you for those purposes as well. So the permanent local housing allocation was established through Senate Bill 2 in 2017. And it was funded through a recordation of $75 per real estate transaction. And that generated funds that could then be allocated to jurisdictions directly through an allocation process or competed for through a grant process. The city of Arcata, and this is for a five-year allocation period. The city of Arcata has approximately a million dollars through this five-year allocation timeframe. That's, and, and the good news is, is that unlike many state funding sources, there's actually some admin associated with monitoring, managing these funds. So that's good news for our budget. The first year's allocation was 176,000 and the expenditure deadline for that is coming up here next year. So it's something I wanted to bring to your attention so you're mindful as you're thinking through how to, how to use those funds. The city of Arcata adopted its allocation plan in about a year ago in 2022. And in that plan, we identified that pre-development is sort of a significant challenge. There's a significant gap in funding pre-development work. Most of the grant funding sources that we go after require that you have site control. You own the property, that you have a plan, that you're shovel-ready, that you'll be able to build within 18 months. And so there are a lot of, you know, steps that need to happen before you get to that point. And all of that pre-development work, you know, drawing up the plans, getting the engineering, doing the environmental work, all of those things, you know, are pretty significant investment for our housing providers. But there, there aren't really resources for that, generally speaking. In this PLHA or the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Funding, it was specifically identified as an allowable use. I want to take you back just a little bit to 2019 to think through our, our housing element and to look at the progress that we've made. I know at least one council member was particularly interested in this. I realize you can't read the text of our fantastic cover page for our housing element here. Very creative. But this was from our six-cycle housing element that was adopted in 2019 and runs through 2027. That housing element has to be certified by the Housing and Community Development Department of the state. So this is the only element of the general plan that has to be certified by the state. The policies and programs that we establish in here are reviewed by the state to identify whether or not we're actually going to be able to implement those programs to meet our, our goals. Our goals primarily relate to the regional housing needs allocation. So RHNA, pronounced Rena sometimes, is the amount of housing that the state has said, shorthand, that the city of Arcata is required to produce in order to meet its housing needs. Now, this number is generated through backcasting census data. They're looking at migration, different parts of people moving from different parts of the state to other parts of the state or moving out of the state, moving into the state. And they use those projections to estimate what the, the city's housing needs will be. And these numbers over the last six cycles have varied quite radically. Their method, I'm just going to, you know, say is, is not very good. The, the numbers that they project have in the past been, you know, wildly high. And we've never seen, you know, population reaching those levels. And at other times they've been ridiculously low and we're far exceeding these. So when you're looking at these regional housing needs numbers, the total units you see on the bottom here that the city is required to produce in this eight-year timeframe is 610 units, according to the state. That's not some magic threshold in terms of a ceiling. And it's, I guess you can consider a floor if we're going to be compliant with state, you know, mandates. These numbers, this 610 is broken up into various income categories. So very low, low, moderate and above moderate. Just for reference, very low income is 50% area median income or less. And that depends on household size. Low income is 80% area median income or less. Moderate is 120 and above moderate is above 120% area median income. And so through our housing element, we need to demonstrate that we're providing housing for all sectors of our community. I will show you now the table filled out. We have to monitor our progress each year and report that to the state. In the middle here, you see on the left, there's still the, the same regional housing needs allocation that I showed you on the last page. These were our targets or our goals for that eight-year period. And this is what we reported in 2022. You could see in 2022, we had done 118% at that time of our very low income. 79% of our low, 26 moderate and above moderate at 20%. And we had met 53% of our objective overall. In large part, this was related to the explosion in accessory dwelling unit market. We've gone, and, and a lot of this has to do with state policy. We've gone from having, you know, between five and 10 accessory dwelling units per year. Pre-2019-ish, when the state started adopting more lenient accessory dwelling unit laws to having about 20 now. And most of those accessory dwelling units fall into the moderate income category based on, you know, state requirements. This also has a lot to do with the council's support for affordable housing projects. We've done really well in the low and very low income categories. On the right here, you see this, this has not been reported to the state, but these are our current numbers. My colleague Jennifer Dart, our Deputy Director of Community Development, tracks these numbers on a monthly basis to stay current. And she provided me these data today. And you can see we've met 118% still of our very low income. That hasn't changed, but we're now up to 88% of low and 118% of moderate. So I give you these to reflect on the fact that, you know, we've, we've met these floor targets for our low income categories. We're well on our way to meeting them for the low income. Have certainly met very low and moderate. We're not going to meet likely the above moderate category in this housing element cycle. But, you know, as we've heard today in the last two agenda items, you know, these numbers, though we've met them, they may not fully address our, our housing need. And so that's something to consider when we're looking forward to, to, you know, funding new affordable housing projects. I forgot, I was going to show you where those numbers were, these circles. Next, just before, again for background, before I jump into the, the specifics of the particular loan, I wanted to share this map. You've seen this before when we were considering the Home Key Projects in Valley West, the West Village and Grove Projects, which have now been added to this. This shows you the affordable housing projects, where they're located throughout town. Again, the red line is the city's boundary. Here's downtown. And these also show you the income restrictions on the projects. So red is restricted to 30% area median income or less. You can see we have those projects scattered throughout town, so on and so forth. So this is just to give you an idea of the distribution of these affordable housing projects. Many of these have been built over the last, you know, 20 years, some of them without city assistance. The Humboldt Plaza, for example. That's a Section 8 project. But the vast majorities have received city assistance. And the city has assisted with well over 600 units. The total number of affordable units in the city of Arcata exceeds 700 units at this point, including those projects that we haven't assisted. Zooming in a little bit to get a better look at those and then whoops. Zooming in a little bit to get a better look at those, and then, whoops, I guess zooming back out. Here's, the first project that we're going to be talking about is in the north area here where the yellow star popped up. It's just outside the city boundaries, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. The second project that we'll talk about in the next agenda item is down in the southern part of the city. So I wanted to show you those with respect to their overall distribution with the rest of the projects as well, just so you can sense for the geographic distribution. The project on the first agenda topic that we're talking about tonight, the Arcata House Partnership Project, I'll dig into a little bit of the detail here. Again, it is just outside the city limits, just north of Janes Road, where it starts to turn into Giantoli, there's the overpasses for 101 there, and this is Hinden Road. Hinden goes out to Tony's over here, there's the Lazy Jay, and Mad River RV Park here, just to orient you to where we're at. Hinden Road then goes out into the county, and the other feature to look at here is this blue dotted line. This is the coastal zone boundary. So the City of Arcata's boundary, in orange, coastal zone boundary here, and now you're oriented to the space. Arcata House Partnership has been approached by the owner of this lot with the star on it, and asked if they, you know, would like to do a project out here. That site is not served by city water or sewer. The site is not in the city's urban services boundary. It has never been planned for development for reasons that I'll detail, you know, coming up next year. Before we get into that, though, I wanted to share with you some of the project detail. Here's a closer view of the site. You can see it's got a single-family home on it right now. The site's about a little over an acre, acre and a half, closer to two, actually, acres, and is, you know, it's got a, you know, sort of a wooded area here, there's some gardens down here, but the area is, you know, primarily just used as a, you know, single-family home site. What Arcata House Partnership is considering doing is a project description, is to, you know, basically create a 100% affordable housing project out here. Now, the detail would have to be determined based on the pre-development studies. They, you know, Darlene is here tonight, she'll be able to, you know, talk to you about some of the conceptual things that they've been thinking about. But ultimately, what they're looking at is sort of a medium-density project with some dispersed, you know, likely following a dispersed model, with a proportion of that restricted to seniors. What Darlene has talked about, and I'll let her explain this in more detail, is a project that's really focused on homelessness prevention, and the project would have at a very minimum, or a maximum, I guess you could say, of 80% area median income. So these would be low-income households or below. And I would suggest that, you know, if we consider making the loan that we do target the affordability covenants associated with this particular loan at that 80%, this is similar to what we did with the Home Key Projects, where we established a higher threshold to protect the project long-term and make sure that it's financially feasible, but that really the targeting for that particular project is deeper, and the specific unit mix will really be dependent on the funding that goes to build the project. So the pre-development loan for this particular site actually sets several things in motion. As I mentioned, this is, you know, out in the county. It's actually in land that is, you know, designated as, you know, agricultural soils, special agricultural soils, even though the site isn't being used for agricultural purposes. It's still in an area that has, you know, ag soils. And so making this pre-development loan, you know, what I want you to be thinking about while considering doing that is the fact that, you know, you'd have to then consider and contemplate several other actions to make this pre-development loan actually translate into a project. We'd be, you know, not that you'd be prejudging the annexation process, there's still, you know, a lot of work that needs to be done through these pre-development loan studies that would lead us to an understanding of what the annexation would look like, but for a project to occur on this site, it would have to be annexed into the city. It would have to be zoned to accommodate the project description, the vision for this site. It would have to be zoned at residential medium at a minimum, or maybe even residential high density. And so the zoning type that you'd be looking at for this site would be, you know, higher density. If this parcel were in the City of Arcata today, it would undoubtedly be zoned ag residential, so a low-density zoning type for, you know, residential uses, but recognizing it's in an area that, you know, formerly was ag, and that could still be, you know, have some ag production on it. You would also be identifying a commitment to partner with Arcata House Partnership on funding for grants to actually build the project out, and then lastly, we'd be doing an extension of water and sewer to the site to, you know, support that additional density. So this, the decision tonight does come with those strings, if you will, that acknowledgement. And so, you know, really, the policy considerations that I think are important here is that, you know, as you saw in the, you know, zoomed-out images, this site really is surrounded by ag-exclusive-type zoning. The county has recently re-designated this residential low-density in their general plan. The zoning has not caught up, it's still zoned ag in the general plan in the county. If we were annexing this, as I mentioned earlier, if we were annexing this, or if it were in the city, we would likely be making the recommendation that it be ag residential, not medium-density, based on a lot of policy document that we have here. And so really, you're pitting the two policy bodies against one another when you're weighing this decision. On the one hand, we have strong ag preservation policies that we, you know, honor and respect, and on the other hand, there's an opportunity here to, you know, produce affordable housing. So that, you know, is a difficult decision, but we wanted to bring this forward for your consideration so that we weren't prejudging that at the staff level. The last thing I wanted to focus in on for this particular project was the loan terms. Again, these are in Exhibit 1 of your Resolution 234-16, which we're asking you to consider adopting tonight. And these loan terms include that the loan would be, you know, $150,000 for pre-development work at 1.5% interest. Your resolution also points out that this interest wouldn't start accruing until after the project gets a certificate of occupancy. It may take quite some time for the project to actually be built out and be occupied, and so recognizing that and not, you know, unduly, you know, financially burdening the project in advance by having those interests accrue this whole time, and then that, the payment, if you will, the term of the payment would be 55 years. That's a typical timeframe for us requiring the period of affordability, and so we're trying to match that repayment term with, you know, with the same term that we would see as the period of affordability initially. Now, these aren't, you know, amortized loans, they're not performing like your typical house loan, where you have a certain amount that is, you know, guaranteed every month. Typically, with affordable housing projects, we build them so they're residual receipt payments. What residual receipt payments means is that after the project has, you know, taken in its revenue through its rents and other sources, after it's paid its expenses for operating that month, if there's any money left over, then that residual receipts kicks in. And so they've paid their insurance, they've paid their bills, they've put away money for, you know, operations expenses, unanticipated operations expenses, and replacement reserves, any money that's left over, we would have a share of that. What we're proposing is that the city receives 75% of that share, and that the borrower would receive 25% of that share in residual receipts payment structure. That allows the City of Arcata to take the money and reinvest it into other projects over time, and it allows Arcata House Partnership, in this case, a little bit on top of their normal operations that they can put away to do other projects themselves. The, again, the number of restricted units that we're proposing here, this $150,000 relative to the entire project cost, which may be, you know, in excess of $15 million, is de minimis. And so we are really not investing at this point in a large proportion of the project. We're recommending at a minimum, one of the units be restricted for, you know, for affordable housing through the city's regulatory agreement, ultimate regulatory agreement on the property. But we also fully anticipate, you know, partnering, again, with Arcata House Partnership on this project, if it goes through financially, and that we would be, you know, securing additional restricted affordable units through that latter process. So I did want to call your attention to, while, you know, we're saying, hey, not less than one unit, be restricted with this $150,000, that's because this is a very tiny proportion of the actual development costs, and also in recognition that, you know, the, you know, the development will likely have other affordability restrictions that this will add to. Darlene Sporer is here to, you know, represent the project as well, if you'd like to hear from her, and I'd also like to address any questions that the council may have about this particular project or the background that I provided for you.
All right, I guess I'll start. So one of the things I really like about this project is, I know that Darlene has said often that the number-one population of houseless people, the growing population, is seniors. So I'm really appreciative that there's going to be a dedicated portion of this housing set aside for seniors. Something that concerns me, though, is that our last study session, when we were talking about the general plan and we were discussing annexation, right, and how we were committed to preserving all this ag land, and just worried that if we do this, that it could be a slippery slope to further annexing more ag land to become housing. I'm also concerned about the lack of transportation infrastructure, especially if there's going to be seniors living in this area, being a little bit remote, and not having any way to get to services, that's concerning. I'm assuming that it's going to take a really long time to get built, if it gets built, so I imagine that hopefully something will be in place by then. That's the concern that I have. And I am concerned about, you know, our lack of workforce housing. I know that that is something that has really been a hole in our housing. We've got not really enough housing for people that work in Arcata, like retail jobs or restaurant jobs that can afford to live here, so I want to make sure that this 80% cap that we have is going to be able to house some people that work here and want to live here. And then I've got one more question about this GM3, I wrote what it is, GM3-something, and how does that translate to encroaching on lands? One more question, I'm so sorry. This, and the annexation, is it different? Is there different rules between annexing public land and annexing private land? So this is private land, so is that like a different rule for annexation? All right, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, what was the question just before the annexation question?
I just wanted to walk through this GM3C.
GM3C, okay.
So do you want all the questions at once, perhaps? Would that, okay, great. So I was wondering if you could show me the cluster real quick, if you could, back on here where you show the low, very low, et cetera? Nope.
The map, yeah.
The map, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, right here. Yeah, give me just two seconds with it, if you could. So currently, we have, if I'm reading, I don't have the legend next to me, but we have low, very low, and then the light green is also, what is that, as far as the demographics for that?
That, okay, so the red is 30% AMI, the orange is 45% AMI, the light green is 50%, and the blue is 80%.
Okay, so let me just try to wrap my head around this. So at 30% for one person, we're looking at about 52,000, or with three people, we're looking at about 74,000. So 80%, if you can help me with the math real quick, I'm just trying to see, as Meredith had talked about workforce housing, you know, what that would look like as far as demographically, what is the wage for 80, what is that number?
Yeah, okay.
And then, give me one second, I said I needed. So what I'm seeing is a cluster over in Valley West, but we need housing, so I get A couple other questions of how much of the portion is going to be dedicated specifically to seniors? And then you said something about the target is deeper, and I didn't know what that meant. I'm hoping you can address that. And then, as Meredith pointed out, you know, we need housing, yes, but we just, we can't, does this set precedent? As, you know, pointed out, it is a slippery slope. We said we were going to preserve ag lands, and it's all about infill, and so this is very contrary to our current general plan and zoning, so not only would we have to annex this in, and I'm assuming it would become Valley West, and then we will have to provide, it's not even in our sphere of influence, and it also is not within our, you know, our service, help me with that. Thank you, urban services, thank you. So we're going to need to annex, that we're going to have to provide sewer and water, and so that was, I guess it's not a, that's not a question, it's more of a comment, because it is contrary to what we're just been working on so hard. And, give me just one more minute, I should be better at keeping my notes organized. Oh, and of course, yes, that the transportation is an issue, and of course, those are things that can be mitigated down the road, because it's a really dangerous quarter, corner there. But, yeah, I guess I am a little bit concerned about segregating the poorest of the poor. It's a heavy lift for Valley West, I think it should be throughout the county, and I do see that you've given me, you know, what is set before me. It does look like there's a cluster, if we add yet another, it'll be six of the, those folks, and they do have to go somewhere, but we also have identified other areas of opportunity, and I'm wondering if we can further explore that. And just wanted to comment on the R-H-N-A numbers. While we have met it at 118%, which is super exciting, in fact, we've met almost all of our numbers, that's like the bare minimum that the state is requiring. We obviously need so much more in low-income and very-low-income housing, so, yeah, it's a mixed bag here for me, and I'm hoping to hear from the public and what their thoughts are, and of course, the other council members. Thank you.
So the way I looked at your map is, there is agricultural land that backs up into this property, when you go back and we look at it, and so this is already, you can see the land that way, and whatever. It seems that like that is actually, I don't know if it's even being used as agricultural land, maybe there's a barn there? It's not where the star is, it's beyond the star.
Are we talking to the east or to the west?
No, it's
Towards the freeway?
It's Hinden Road, it goes along Hinden Road, splits two sides as it goes out there, above, keep going, 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 there. So that looks like that is probably unencumbered agricultural land. I don't know what uses, you know, right now, I mean, what kind of agricultural use it is. I was out there the other day, it was before I even realized this was going to happen, so I didn't really tune in to the agricultural uses out there. But it seems like this is so contiguous to what we have currently going on in the city, and it would be in the Valley East and not in the Valley West. I'm sorry, and so as time goes on, over the years, excuse me, we've had development occur. I think the first part, thing that happened in the Valley West area was River Community Homes. That was one of the projects that happened. And then gradually, different things, as there's, Valley West was agricultural land originally. When it was purchased by Mr. Thompson, who developed it and put in the shopping center and made it available, he built the first, well, no, it's, the first motel out there. He built that, he built, but it was all agricultural land. So it was open space, or land that was available for development, and so we have to think of it that way. Now, you know, it's, years have gone by, but when I first moved here in 1971, that was very agricultural. was very agricultural and there was very, very little development, except for the new development. And it was all planned, that this was the kind of things that development was going to happen in this area. And it has because we are constrained in many other parts of Arcata for development. So I would say that this would fall well within to our preview of thinking about it. And not all the land is actually going to be used for housing, I don't think. And I'd be interested in looking at the mapping on that.
I would say the council members have pretty much asked all of my questions. We've got, no, we've got them all out there, it's okay, I don't have to ask them, you guys did it. And I guess my main, my main area of interest is, is that it is outside of our boundaries and what would, because even if we wanted to, it would still need to go through LAFCO, is that correct? And if the county is having it, you know, there, if it's low density there, what are the chances of it changing to medium density? So I have a concern about that. But then also just we've been spending so much work on infill to protect the areas that are in our boundaries and just on the other side, there's lots that are in our sphere of influence that, you know, we, if we wanted to go a different direction, we could build all of, you know, that out, but that's not the direction that the town has said that we want to go. So that's my main concern.
And the question that I will add, which I think it was kind of asked, but maybe not as directly as I want to know, what is the cost for, or, you know, weighing, weighing the cost? I mean, for annexation or, I mean, the possibility of like just extending services? And is that a possibility to be able to just extend water and sewer, but, you know, it can still be in the county? And then, because, you know, yeah, we've done that before. And so I'm just curious about that. And then, yeah, we've kind of gone through my little pros and cons list here already. So, and just something that's kind of in my mind, just thinking, because we've had conversations and saw a presentation also from the folks at Mad River Hospital and looking at already doing some more housing in that area. And again, just thinking about the impacts and I, I think about transportation a lot as well and just also increased number of people in that area on a section of road that is already so dangerous and an overcrossing that is already, you know, not very pedestrian or bike friendly and how, you know, adding additional housing both in that area and then also thinking forward of, you know, the possibility of more housing going in at Mad River Hospital. Just kind of looking at that side of the 101 as it begins to grow and thinking out about, you know, the, the main place where those people are going to go to shop and go to spend money and go to get food or, or whatever is going to be in the Valley West shopping center. So they'll be traveling, you know, over that, that fairly dangerous overpass. So again, that's just something that's kind of hanging out in my head. And then I guess the only other question I would ask is at, at this point, has there been, you know, any conversation with the county? And if you could ju, no, I, yeah, you said it already, but I, I just, so what the timeline looks like, I guess, for the county's change in zoning on that as well? Like when, when does that take effect? And how does that impact, you know, what we're looking at here tonight? So I think that takes all of our questions.
So I would just like to mention something from HTA today, from the Humboldt Transit Authority, and they've been talking about the micro pilot program and they're going to be implementing that. And so that'll be something new and this isn't going to happen overnight. And if that pilot is approval, it works well, is used, and I brought up the fact that Danco is interested in the Rogers Garage and that's part of where the micro transit is going to go. And so that would provide transportation. But by the time something gets built, we're talking months out, maybe, well, not months, we're talking years out. And so we know that we have, I don't know what it is, but right there we have, our connections for the city are all right adjacent to this property, they're across the road. And I think that by the time things happen, we will be having this micro transit pilot program, will not be a pilot anymore. We'll, there are a lot of programs that can take you, that could take you, if you call it, exactly where you want to go. So I think the future as far as transportation is opening up and so we shouldn't limit ourselves on development because of transportation at this time.
So I, I did say that, you know, obviously we can do mitigate that traffic and it is going to, you know, we're doing better with HTA. I guess I just wanted to address, you know, thank you for the history of Valley West. And I do understand that it originally was agricultural land, but it isn't. It is now outside of our sphere of influence and it is agricultural land and it goes against everything that the community said we wanted to do, which was to protect our open spaces and agricultural land. If we do this, we're setting precedent, we might as well, as somebody said, is, okay, so let's just build out to everything and, you know, and we'll have the transportation there, so what does it matter? I don't know, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't think that, oh, go ahead.
Did you want me to answer the questions first or? You guys are kind of in deliberations, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I don't, transportation's not the deal breaker for me, is what Kimberly was talking about. Yeah.
Neither for me. The, the deal breaker is that we need to write, I guess we need to change then what we said we thought was important because if it's not important, then we need to be consistent with that.
And the fact that we've done so much outreach with the general plan stuff, if we're going to like spring this on potentially Valley West next to other very low income housing, I would, I would like to see some outreach done out there now. I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
That's quite all right. Yeah, thank you, those are all really great questions, I think in particular with the ag preservation questions. You know, if, if there wasn't the ongoing discussions about, you know, affordable housing and in particular, I'll use the term again, deep targeting, and what I mean by that is targeting into lower income levels. So getting below 50% area median income, getting into 30% area median income households to, to try and, you know, make sure that the, the most vulnerable in our communities are, you know, have a safe, dry place to sleep.
Could, could I just ask quick clarification because I will forget if it's okay? So when you say 30 to 50% deep targeting, I'm confused because you said we would be doing 80% of the median income. So how much will actually be for those vulnerable populations that are at the 30%, which is, you know, the median income for one family is, I think it's 52? So what does that look like then for the 80%? I guess, are we building housing for who?
Okay, so, so the project description isn't fleshed out yet and I don't think at this point, this funding source is committing to that. That would come at a later stage. But Arcade House Partnership is the project proponent, they serve the homeless population. So they would be on this project looking to do very deep targeting, folks who are at risk of homeless, being homeless. And so those would be lower income households. And again, I, I would like to defer, you know, the conceptual vision to, to Darlene. When we opened this process, we talked to all of our housing providers that, you know, that we have traditionally worked with and said, look, we have these funds that we need to, to commit, we'd like to do it through the PLHA process to, you know, to get, you know, predevelopment money out there. Do you have a project that you think is ready for, you know, at this stage? And of the ones that had projects that were ready, Arcade House Partnership was one and Danco was the other. And we'll talk a little bit more about the Danco project next. But I anticipate that Arcade House Partnership project would be that lower income level to target folks that are, you know, really vulnerable in our, in our community. The, the regulatory agreement, what I'm suggesting is that we say a maximum of 80%. So anyone who's at 50% is under that maximum of 80%. Anyone who's at 30% is under that maximum of 80%. So the ultimate project can still be at a lower income level than what the requirements of this loan, if it were made, would, would require.
Yeah, but I think the point that we're trying to make is that we, the, the point of all this infill housing that we're trying to do is to have those people as close to services as possible and to be able to walk to them safely. And I think this is kind of the antithesis of that. So, I mean, that, that's the point I'm trying to make. But like my question is, if it's private land though, is that, is that a different story?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to go through and answer all of your questions and I absolutely am not debating you, okay? I want to be very clear, I'm not debating you. I'm just trying to provide responses based on, on this. To the ag preservation piece, you know, if this did not have in the balance affordable housing versus ag preservation, it would have likely never left my office. Folks come in and say all the time, you know, can we develop this? And I say the city's policy is, you know, that we don't develop ag lands, that would have been the end of the conversation from my perspective. I might advise them to, you know, have a conversation with one of you and, and if at the policy level you wish to change our policy direction, you know, then, then I have new policy direction and I can have that conversation with them. So again, the reason why I'm bringing this forward is because there is a very narrow way that I could see the, the city council balancing the policies that we have both for ag preservation and for affordable housing and saying, yes, we're going to make this loan, we recognize what we're giving up. At the same time, if it were any other project, you know, I want to be clear, I would, I would be telling that, that prospective applicant, there's just not a way to do that given our current general plan, you know, process. That relates, I'll, I'll just jump to the GM three C question because it relates to that. We have two different policies that deal with annexation. And policy GM three C applies to undeveloped properties in the county and it basically says if we adopt, if we, I'm sorry, if we annex undeveloped lands in a county that have a story index, which is a measure of how rich the agricultural soils are, are greater than 60, higher the, the number, the better the ag soils are, then those would have to be annexed only as agricultural exclusive parcels. This policy ties back to, just for a little bit of background, this policy ties back to what we were attempting to do in our last general plan where we had a huge urban services boundary all out into, into, I'm sorry, a huge sphere of influence out into the ag lands. And the concept was we have this other policy that's going to protect those properties when they annex in and they would become ag exclusive properties. Policy three D actually applies to developed properties. Now, you know, some may say, well, it's not very developed, but it's a developed property. And so policy three D applies to this property. And so it doesn't have that same requirement that it come in as ag exclusive. These, I'm, I was trying to portray for you the sort of narrow pathway you might have if you wanted to pursue this. I'm hearing that, you know, there is some, some concern about that in particular with the infill work that we've been doing and, and the fact that we'd be, you know, kind of going against some of these ag policies, hearing that loud and clear. The question about workforce housing, again, this project is not that project, this project would be deep targeting low income. The Danco project is more likely a workforce housing project and we'll talk a little bit more about that. But I guess just in general, you know, there's, there is a need, there still is greater need in homeless housing and low income housing, very low income housing. And we also have a need for workforce housing. And so, you know, pursuing as, as much and as many of those projects as the, the council wants to pursue, I think we're, there's still a need. In terms of what 80% area median income is and what that translates into for our county, these are all dependent on household size, but generally speaking, they set the, the threshold for a four-person household. Median income is 83,800 in the state's last projections and low income, so the 80% area median income threshold is 65,950. So that's for a four-person household. It scales down for smaller households and up for larger households. So, you know, to give you a sense of, you know, what that, I'm not going to try and calculate it right now, but if you took 60, 65,000 and divided that by 2080, that would give you an approximate hourly wage for, you know, for what that area, 80% area, 65,000?
65,950.
65,950 is the number. And if you divide that by 2080, that'll give you, that's the number of work hours in a year, that'll give you an hourly wage for that 6980, roughly approximation. The.
Could I just ask a question? So if somebody made $32 an hour, they would be considered qualified for this low income housing?
Low income housing, yeah. And, and one way to think about that.
Wow, I guess I'm extremely low income.
Well, and I think, I think this is, this is an important point to think about, that, that when we talk about low income housing, we're, we're talking about people in our community that are, that we have relationships with, that we, people, many of the people that work at the city of Arcata, their wage puts them at 80% area median income. People that work at, you know, open door clinic, many of them are at 80% area median income, some of them are lower. You know, and another way to look at this is that, you know, if you have a two-person, a two workforce household, you have two people working in the house and each of them is making minimum wage, they would be making, combined, they'd be making about $34 an hour. So that's an 80% area median income household right there. So, you know, just different ways of putting this in perspective in terms of, you know, the kinds of households that we're talking about that, you know, qualify for these programs. The percentage seniors, that's a question for Darlene. I think I answered the question about deep targeting. Transportation is definitely an issue out there. I think there are, you know, I've heard it that there, you know, there's not so much a concern, we would definitely have to build that into the project. One of the, you know, projects that we've done recently came with, you know, bus passes for, the Sora Place came with bus passes for all the residents. We're also still working on a component of that project that would have a car share program for, you know, project-based car share program. So there are creative things that we've done in the past that we can, you know, continue to do in the future, even when there are transportation issues. And then, can we just extend water service, Mayor, to your, your questions? I'm not going to say no, but I will say that there's, there's a lot of policy, there was, again, a very narrow gap that happened with the project that we did that for before. We were trying to pursue annexation on that project and the annexation proposal fell apart. And that was in light of a, you know, a, you know, basically a sewer, septic onsite sewer failure that was happening, that's not the condition here. The county's zoning, if we were to say, well, we're just going to extend sewer and water to it and let the county zoning satisfy it, county zoning has residential low density, so you'd be able to have one or two houses on it. The project they're talking about is like, you know, 30, 40 units. And so it just, you wouldn't be able to get there from here with that approach. And I think that, you know, where I'm hearing the deliberations go, you know, if I'm reading into things, then my tea leaves a little bit, is that you would be looking more towards saying, look, this isn't the right project for us right now. We'd like to look for a project that's more at an infill site and, and, you know, look to focus on those areas, even though there is an opportunity here. So that's, that's the decision you have to make.
Yeah, the only question I did not hear you answer though is, is if it's because it's, it's a parcel of private land that someone owns that wants to sell it to us, does that like change things?
It does not, no, not in terms of the LAFCO process. Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to answer that one.
So I think that you definitely summarized my sentiments and I guess we have GM three C and D to, to do that very thing. We created it specifically to protect ag lands. And I, I do fear, as one of the community members pointed out, that if we allow this conversion of agricultural land to be purchased for development purposes, then we immediately raise the value of surrounding lands to a point where it's unreachable for our farmers. And our food is important, we've, yeah. And then also, you know, we've been working really hard on this infill, we have the gateway area plan and we've also had other areas that we have identified, areas of opportunity. I think that right now we have sufficient land to still build these projects without having to do urban sprawl.
I was going to open it up for public comment. I'd like to hear from the public before we deliberate anymore because I think that, that could help inform some, some decisions too. I see some nodding heads out there and some engaged folks. So, three minutes on agenda items, please make your way to the podium if you would like to speak on this agenda item. Thank you, go ahead.
My name's Sage Smuckler, I'm a representative of one of the nearby businesses. And if we were to move forward with this, we would appreciate if there was.
And if we were to move forward with this, we would appreciate if there was an open line of communication where we could offer input, advice, and assistance with this situation. And just to answer, sorry, answer the councilwoman's question about that neighboring area. Currently, it is an active cow pasture, and there is a little settlement going on there as well. Thank you.
Next commenter, please.
Good evening, I'm Fred Wise. Just for starters, the 80% figure for two people in a family, such as a single-parent household, the rent that they would pay would be about $1,100. See, first, I want to value all the work that Arcata has done in creating low-income housing. It's all over the place. This funding plan was not adopted in October 2022. The final funding must be completed by April 30th, 2024. It was a five-year program, so there's still time to consider other sites. A bunch of questions. Are there no other for-sale parcels within the city boundaries that might be suitable? Could funds be awarded to Arcade House Partnership without designating a specific parcel, leaving it open for them to find another parcel? What is the current balance of the available funds? And what are some examples of loans that have been made and the payback under this program that we've actually seen? As the council has already discussed, to annex prime agricultural land outside of the city's sphere of influence is, as Councilman Matthew said, a slippery slope situation. To take the approach that because there is a quote-unquote "facility", meaning a building of any kind on the parcel, that somehow that makes the parcel fair game because it's not protected by the city's land use code, is also a dangerous path. This parcel is 1.63 acres. Future city councils may look at the decisions that's made here tonight, or not tonight perhaps, and think it's okay to annex larger parcels. If you do choose to pursue this annexation, I say there needs to be a way to make sure the annexation is tied to the construction of this project. And legally, this can be done. The idea is to avoid a repeat of the Creekside Life Plan Humboldt situation, where the project was not built, and the annexed land that was sold, and didn't get the low-income housing. The Community Development Director wrote, "The council should clearly understand that this property encroaches into lands that would receive the protection of the general plan policy, GM 3C." That's been discussed a bit here tonight. The, the terms of the loan are such that the project is not built. The borrower has 50-year period to pay it back. It seems that if the project is not built, they should be able to return the funds much sooner than that. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and I had the opportunity today to take the bus up to North Arcata and dangerously cross that road from Hinden by the Welcome Center across to the property, not realizing it was a property that had a building on it, and actually, a home, and all this. I thought it was just an open pasture that we were talking about, so I was somewhat surprised. And looking at the picture here, and thinking about what so many of you brought up, and I totally appreciate recognizing that the city of Arcata has made a commitment to preserving ag land. And I think that's a really important commitment. And we have committed to infill and density in our planning as well. So, I know that we need new places for people to be sheltered and housed and all. But when I saw this property, I saw all sorts of wonderful alternative ideas to just building cookie-cutter kind of housing for people in a beautiful rural development with some trees, that, you know, what will happen to those, you know, if we are to build something there? I think of, I went to visit, we are up, the place up in McKinleyville that is being built. Mary Keen's very involved in creating a space up there, and she's gotten an architect to commit to saving 80% of the natural environment in the development of that project. So, when we're talking about opportunities to create more living space, let's just call it living space as opposed to housing, maybe, because in an area like that, we could be really creative and experimental in how we can try different things without having to tie it into the infrastructure. There's a lot of people doing pretty radical housing and living communal spaces in other parts of the country and the world. I oftentimes think of the man who was building the Earth Houses outside of Santa Fe or Albuquerque. I forgot his name, but also Findhorn in Scotland. So, you know, things that we have opportunities to really look differently at a place like that without infringing on the actual environment, the natural environment, so deeply, you know, by cutting into it with an urban design. So, maybe this is not a City of Arcata project. Maybe somebody else can take it on and create something vibrant for our needs. And so, that's what I just wanted to say.
Thank you, Joanne. Next speaker, please.
Okay, so, on this topic, I'm Sarah Bean. I think one of the attractive portions of Arcata for me was the greenery and the trees. Coming from Orange County, LA area, over 10 years ago, it was very healing for me. I understand we have an incredible desire to house up people. If we could maybe work creatively in also collaborating with those, house people to maybe incorporate a garden area. So, within, maybe still also staying within the city of Arcata, but somehow creatively coming up with an area within that zone that people could work communally in a garden, or in a, can you use it as a mixed residential and agricultural zone, so we can maybe even create possibly new jobs? Or feeding the people within that small area? Because I think there's also a progressive movement towards people growing their own food, helping the immediate neighbors around them. And so, let's not make a concrete jungle out of everything, like the eight-story buildings and whatever. And maybe Danco also is not the only builder we could work with. Maybe I'm ignorant, but it seems almost like the Danco takeover. And whether it's the Coastal Commission or whatever, it's like, I understand some people have more means and funds and people, but utilizing everybody in our community, giving equal opportunity, and being creative with our new houseless or low-income housing population, where they can be an integral part of creating that neighborhood, whether it's the planting, or the park, or whatever it is. Maybe having a senior, one of the buildings designated for communal purposes, seniors coming together, something like that. Because I think, overall, our community does like seeing the green stuff all around us. And we want to come together and support each other, but not remove the agriculture we love around us.
All right, any other in-person comments? Okay, we will move to Zoom. Is there anybody on Zoom?
Yeah, our first speaker is Lisa. Go ahead, Lisa.
Good evening. Good evening, Council members. I sent in a letter this afternoon, but I wanted to add some thoughts after having gone out to the property to see the on-the-ground situation. I could not help to notice the boldly-placed sign on the front side of the house, Hoopla Farm. I could also see a good-sized greenhouse with a diverse abundance of plants, and I thought, how absolutely wonderful. A true testimony to the value of these small parcels of land with great soil. Whether the person operating this small farm is young or old, renting or owning, growing for themselves or for others, we see that this is a small farm on the outskirts of our community. I also noticed that every other home in that area would qualify for annexation if the argument that David provided in his staff report actually was supposed, supported by our general plan, which it is not. I could no doubt go all around the city limits and find dozens of similar agricultural properties with homes on them, which would qualify under Director Loyah's rationale. We need to be very careful to not go down this road. We need a council that fully supports all of the effort that has been put in over the last several years to support infill in order to provide housing and protect our natural resource lands. Otherwise, this is feeling like smoke and mirrors. To send Arcade House Partnership down this road, well-knowing how it may end up, would be a disservice to everyone. Recognizing the outcome of the appeal of the annexation attempt on the west side of Arcata just a few years ago, as well as the withdrawal just a few months ago of the proposal to convert a small agricultural property, it would be a foolish endeavor to send this well-intentioned organization down a similar path. This property is zoned agricultural-exclusive in the current county general plan. It is outside of our urban services boundary and our sphere of influence. It is on the outskirts of our community, as far north as it possibly could be from the downtown. It is prime agricultural soil. Conversion of such a property is not supported by our general plan. This is not good planning. Please support our general plan. Support the efforts of our community in protecting these resources. Support Arcade House Partnership by steering them in a direction that will be smooth sailing with good outcomes. Keep agricultural land as agricultural land prices. So, at agricultural land prices. So, those who want to grow food for others in our community-
Thank you, Lisa, that is your three minutes.
...to purchase small and large parcels. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Do we have any other comments on Zoom this evening?
Our next speaker is Chris. Go ahead, Chris.
Good evening, council members, staff, and any public out there. I apologize for not being there on purpose for this important meeting, but balancing lots of things, as you all well know and are doing the same. I really want to show my appreciation for the comments of the council. The majority of the council asked similar questions to what came to my mind when I read the agenda packet for this meeting. I would also send kudos to David Loyah for his description and staff report to introduce this concept and idea to you, council members. And I like to say that looking for creative ways to create housing is what we need to do. And that's a process, opening up and accessing property that needs to be acquisitioned and problem-solved, is one idea that obviously folks are looking at. And I hesitate to make a judgment statement that it's a bad idea or a good idea, because you have all asked the kinds of questions that I think will get you moving in the right direction. The speakers from the public tonight similarly asked really great questions that I think will help guide you. I think there's some better solutions to this. This is one solution that is on the table today. But anyway, I hope you guys think this through and realize you don't have to make an opinion or an absolution tonight with this. You can look further, talk more with the folks wanting to promote this, and make the best decision you can. Thank you for your time and effort, everyone.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have any other Zoom commenters?
We had a hand that was going up and going down, but it does not seem to be coming back up. So, no more online comments.
All right. So, I will bring it back to the council for any deliberation or other questions that have come up.
One of the things I believe that Arcade House is really concerned about is the senior women and not being able to afford places to live. And Darlene was, Arcade House tried to buy a motel in order to help with this in, I believe, in Eureka. But she knows that a senior woman who has not, who's not always lived in a house or an apartment or whatever, would have a really hard time living outside. We've had all these people talk to us about homelessness. But in order to get secure, a certain kind of housing, they would have to be homeless for a year. She doesn't believe that they could actually make it. And so, I'm not too sure how this project came about, but I'm assuming this property owner contacted Arcade House. And I believe you're looking at those people, the women, specifically women, who would lose their housing, and they would have to live on the streets for one year in order to secure housing, and she could prevent that. So, maybe, Darlene, you want to come up and address some of the questions for us?
Yes, please, Darlene. No, no, I was, no, please.
Thank you for listening to this and being concerned about developing affordable housing in Arcata. When Home Key 3 funds were released, Arcade House Partnership approached 12 different property owners. We only are interested in properties that are vacant, because we never want to displace anybody. We had a serious conversation with two people, and no one was willing to have this kind of project on their property. When this landowner came to us and said, he's very interested in this, what excited me about this is that there is this stand of trees in the middle. There is a community garden. There is a space to have multi-generational property housing on here. My vision, and it will all come to pass when we do a pre-development plan, whether through the city or some other way, is to have 20 standalone small units with kitchens and bathrooms and a little porch for seniors on one side, and to stand the stand of trees and the community garden and a community space in the middle. And then, 15 family units on the other side. That's my fantasy, but we'll have to see, you know, what the property can really hold. Why is this important to me? Arcade House Partnership, first of all, our mission is to provide housing for people who are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless. So, although we do serve people who are in the workforce, because there are people who go to work every day who are homeless, that's not our primary target. Our target is people who are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless, at any income level up to whatever the funding sources will allow. The other thing that was really important, and we've seen this with our project in Eureka and our project in Arcata, is it is really important for people to have outside space, to have community gardens, to have ways to communicate with each other, and really build new community, because we know that that's so important to help people learn how to build new communities that are very different, right? When we take people from their community on the streets and put them in housing, there's a lot of adjustment that has to happen. All of our projects have staff and transportation. So, transportation is part of who we are. And that's part of what our board's commitment is to making sure that our projects are usable by everyone. So, why here? First, I think primarily because we have an interested buyer, I mean seller, which we have not really found anywhere else. You know, there's a lot of NIMBY everywhere. People know who we are, they know who we serve. They also know what neighborhoods they don't want us serving in. And so, I think that's really important, as we develop these properties and people- As we develop these, these properties and people see that, that people are really good neighbors and good for the community, I think that'll change. Maybe not before I'm really old enough to retire, but I think that we're getting there. So all of those reasons are why I think this is important. I think it's close enough to services, the hospital's right there, we're thinking about seniors, a lot of medical care. And it just, in my mind, it works, but without pre-development funds, without a survey and an architect and doing some of those drawings and, and ideas, we're not going to really know what the capacity is and what that looks like. Other questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
I absolutely love your vision. I'm just wondering, is there any reason why we couldn't do that same vision? I know the Gateway Area Plan will be providing green spaces, it will be walkable. I know that seniors over at Lazy J don't come to our meetings because they cannot drive at night, that's why they call in. What about city property? I know that we have property in Arcata that could be used for this. I know we also have one of the parking lots, which is over, help me out, what is that parking lot? It's on Seventh and GH?
You mean right downtown?
Yes. So that, that is owned by the city as well. I'm, I'm just thinking that, yes.
This is too, right here.
Yes, to what you want to do, just not in ag property, in ag lands.
So I may be the only dissenting vote, because I really think it has possibilities, and I think it is a good project, and I, I don't know how it's going to develop out, but I, I think we need to take that time to look at it and see. And I don't, I mean, I know everyone's concerned about, if you buy a house for this much money, that means this house is worth that, this is worth that, and these people can come up and sell their houses for more. But in this case, this is going to have services that no one else is going to have, and I think we have to really look at our population of people that need services that you can provide, and we need to do that. I support this idea and this concept, and I'd like to see the pre-development and how that turns out, and then we'll know whether we go forward or not.
Thank you.
I have a question that's probably more geared towards David, because it asks about process and everything. And so, I mean, from my understanding, you know, this is, this is a pre-development loan that will get us a project to look at. Once a project exists, what does that planning process look like? Does it go through the Planning Commission? Once we're working through the annexation, does that go through the Planning Commission? How does that work with LAFCO and with us? Because right now, in my mind, this is, this is really preliminary, and I would feel pretty comfortable moving forward with this. However, once we get to the point of there being a project, it does raise a lot more questions, and to kind of, you know, inform one of our commenters' points that, you know, we've seen this, I remember when we went through the Creekside Annexation, it was one of my first things on the council, and it was a really exciting, you know, prospective project, and then it got sold out from under their feet, and we went through all of that work and wasted all of our, you know, time too, and LAFCO's time and the Planning Commission for something that never happened. And so my question just kind of regards what that process looks like, and how can we ensure that if we're going to move forward with this, that this housing actually does get built?
Yeah, the, that's a really good question, and I think to start, I, I wouldn't be afraid to make decisions in the future because a project didn't work out in the past. You know, that was a very unique set of circumstances, and it probably would have been developed if the council had approved it in 2000, 2000 when it first came forward. That project actually came forward in 2000, 2007, and then when you reviewed it as well. In terms of what the process would look like, I mean, I, I do, and part of the reason why I put up on the slide what those triggers are, what the next steps are, is because I think that, you know, viewing this as purely speculative is, is probably not the right decision to make. We're proposing to make a loan to Arcata House Partnership for them to study this specific piece of property, to get the planning process started for this specific piece of property, to be able to develop it with, you know, something akin to the vision that Darlene mapped out. If you're having reservations about the, you know, conversion of ag lands or the transportation or these other things that you think are going to prevent you from being able to make a decision on this piece of property to actually build that project out, my strong recommendation would be not to put Arcata House on the hook for the money that we're loaning them to study this piece of property. There is kind of a provision out in the term sheet where if they're, for whatever reason, not able to complete the process, because not everything is within our control, that we give them a very long period of time to return the funds, to, you know, repay the funds, and/or to offer that they, or for them to offer us a new unit somewhere else, so that they, we've essentially taken the, the value that we're committing towards that one unit and getting it into a new project. The funds would have been spent, so I wanted to address one of the comments that we received, that they would be able to just return the funds back to us if the project is, is not built. Pre-development funds are spent, and then a project happens much later. They spend the pre-development funds to get the engineering designs, studies, to then go through the process. What our process would look like, to finally answer your question, is that after doing that pre-development work, which would take several months for them to get those studies in place, they would then apply to the city for annexation and designation as, you know, residential medium, let's say. The, the Planning Commission would hold hearings on that. You know, at a very minimum, they would have to hold probably two hearings. That would be a really fast evaluation of this project. And then they would make a recommendation to the city council. The city council would be evaluating the annexation, the general plan amendment, and the land use code amendment, you know, and probably the project as well. And you'd be evaluating the, the environmental document. Depending on the, the nature of the environmental document, you know, that could be up to, you know, let's say, a year later. The city council then would take action and submit an application to LAFCO. That application to LAFCO would be for an annexation, single parcel annexation of this, this property here. To another commenter's point about, you know, what happened last time when we were looking at the Creekside Annexation, at that time, LAFCO made the recommendation, LAFCO staff made the recommendation to pull in several other properties into that annexation process. Recognizing, there, there was an appeal of that, the city appealed that process through that, when they were going through that decision, the city actually commented in opposition to that because of our ag preservation policies. And so because we went through that process, I worked with LAFCO staff ahead of time, and I, I confirmed with them that they would not, again, make a proposal to start pulling in other properties if we came forward with an annexation. And while, you know, like all good planners, they couldn't give me a definitive answer, they said that they, they thought this would make good sense to have a single parcel annexation. So I don't think we'd be looking at that same process, but they would have to go through the annexation process. And then if that's approved, then they could start doing the development, you know, submittals for, for building applications. So you're probably looking at, you know, a minimum of two years from the time when, you know, they start getting their pre-development work started. All of that, I think, when you make this loan, you should be thinking to yourselves, we are also going to be approving all of those things. There may be conditions, there may be things, things that come up. We might find through the pre-development process that, you know, there's, you know, major fault that runs through the property or some, some other reason that makes it completely undevelopable, outside of our control. In that case, they would be looking at repaying over 50 years or finding a new unit to give to us. But I do, I really do think that, you know, you should weigh these policy decisions now, make that decision, and, and go with that. Don't make this loan if you want to preserve ag lands.
Okay. Thank you, David.
On this parcel.
And so then I will add then, to, to wrap up my point, just to kind of inform what Alex said. I, I, I do see the scrutiny that needs, needs to take, but in, in my time on this council, I have never voted against a single housing project, and I know that this community needs housing, and I really share the vision that Darlene, you know, laid out for this, and that's something I would like to see in that area, that does focus on helping our senior populations, our families, and being able to also incorporate elements of nature and, and natural elements into a property. And, and, you know, when we're looking at properties that do have agricultural value and weighing it with affordable housing and, and how those weigh out, I mean, in my, in my mind, you know, I, I will always fall towards affordable housing and, but, but with these reservations and the scrutiny that, you know, how, how can we maintain the rural element of, of this parcel while still being able to provide housing? And so, yeah, that's how I feel about it.
So I wanted, I wanted to, oh, I wanted to ask one. I fully agree with what Director Loyah was saying. That's what I was going to bring up about. If we have this much reservation, then I don't think it's in good spirit to authorize a loan for that money if we, if we really don't feel, like, if we're not bought into the project. I don't think that's fair to anyone. And I don't think, I, I don't know, I, I don't, I've never voted against a housing project. I don't know if any of us up here have, but the thing that was interesting about this one, and I don't know who's contacted the rest of you, but the, the contact that I've had, not just here but offline, has not been in support of it. And typically, we have a very pro-housing community, and usually people do rally and they show up and they, in most circumstances, they do push us towards housing, but that's part of my hesitation, is that I, there hasn't been that push this time, so I feel like, I mean, if we were going to, you know, if we're going to take a vote now, if we're comfortable to do that, then, you know, we can do that. The only other suggestion that I would have is, you know, if we want to give the public more time to weigh in and table it, we could do that as well. But I feel like if we're going to vote on it right now, it's probably not going to, probably not going to go the way that, you know, that Arcata House Partnership, and your plan sounds absolutely lovely, which I know sounds empty if we're not, you know, considering it, but I do mean that sincerely. So that's where I'm at.
I just have a question. So it was pointed out that we do have six more months. It's until, is that correct, April 24th before these funds go away?
Yes.
Okay. And is it a one-shot deal? So if she uses them, then they're gone, right? We're not able to do another pre-study?
Yeah, this is, it's a loan. The idea is that they would pay it back through residual receipts, but, yeah, if they're unable to, you know, make this project work.
And my question to a point that Councilwoman Stillman made was that these are services that no one else will have, so it's not going to raise the value, but what's to prevent then others from asking for the same services and getting annexed in and saying that, well, they're going to build workforce housing? And if we're looking at the 80% median income, that really is workforce housing.
My question, my question was, I wanted to ask, is can this be, since the property owner came to Arcata House and suggested this, it seems that they are interested in consummating a deal. And are they willing to agree that they won't sell it out from under you, or can you have any binding agreements with them that you know of, or the city can have a binding agreement with the property owner?
I, I have a right of first refusal, and that's good for two years.
Okay, well, I think that's, that is important. I know we are up, is really busy, and coming up with the fact that they have a lot of open space. It's a very big project, a property that they have, and they only want to develop a section of it, which leaves the other open for roaming, et cetera, and it sounds like this would also have open space on it. But I just wanted to ask about that. I think that's one of the most important things.
All right. Kind of what I'm hearing is that if there's a motion, it probably won't pass, so we can, we can make a motion and then let it die, or we can choose to, to table this if folks want to have more outreach. What's, what's the motion here, folks? Where are we going?
Well, why don't I make the motion since I, whatever. I know it won't make a lot of people happy, but I would like to adopt, adopt Resolution Number 234-16 to authorize 100, I want to make sure it's the right one. Am I in the right one?
Yep.
Okay. I'm just learning to use this machine now. $150,000 loan to Arcata House Partnership for pre-development studies for acquisition and development of affordable housing at 3605 Hindon Road.
Is there a second? So not seeing a second, that motion's dead, so, all right. I think we will not be moving forward on this item this evening.
I will say that I really appreciated our conversation. I think this is the first time that we had a pretty big disagreement, and I really respect everybody's perspectives, and I'm, I'm really glad that, that we had it, so cheers.
I keep looking at gradients of agreement and, and thinking where I, I fall, you know, and that would have been important to me tonight. I see, I see merits on both sides again. Thank you guys for the, the good discussion, yeah.
I just, I want to thank you for always having Arcata House Partnerships back, and I really appreciate this conversation. And I know you're committed to affordable housing, so thank you for this. Thanks.
All right. That'll now take us to Item D, Resolution Number 234-17, authorizing a similar $150,000 loan to Danco Communities for pre-development studies for affordable housing at 1622 Old Arcata Road. Do we have a staff report?
Yeah, one thing that I tried to pull the, the map together for today, and I didn't have time to work with our GIS team to get the map produced, but I will be bringing it to you as soon as it is produced, is an overlay of these exact same data showing you where these affordable housing projects are, along with the underlying zoning. Part of the reason why the distribution of affordable housing projects is the way that this is, is because that's where high-density developments are allowed. Throughout the vast majority of the city, high density is not allowed. One of the things that we're proposing in the general plan update that you've been looking at is to change some of the density requirements for, for commercial mixed use, and change some of the other zoning requirements, some of the other standards that would make housing development more flexible on these commercial mixed-use projects. I say that by way of introduction, because the current zoning for this next project, the Rogers Garage, as it's known as, is a commercial mixed-use zoned district, and so I think the project that they're considering would probably only be feasible under, you know, future zoning, and so I want you to be aware of that as well as you, you know, go forward and consider a decision on this tonight. So with that background, this item is to consider authorizing a similar loan to Danco Communities, adopting Resolution 23417. And I would say because of the, the timeline, in particular, if the last action meant that that, that the first property is no longer on the table, the loan for the first property is no longer on the table, I'm going to make a recommendation that you modify the resolution and increase it from $150,000 to $180,000. That will allow us to secure a loan under the PLHA Permanent Local Housing Allocation Grant that helps us to expend our entire first year's allocation, any portion of which we don't out, commit before April 30th will then be wiped away. We will no, no longer have access to that. Okay, so the Danco project is, again, it's on the south side of the city, it's out off Old Arcata Road, seen in the star here. It's right across the street from Jacobi School, Jacobi Creek School. It's the, the little metal building, if you've heard the term Quonset hut before, got a couple of those around. So there's a Quonset hut right on the, the property here. And the buildings, you know, kind of take up the entire frontage. You can't really see the property from behind. Property actually encompasses, again, almost, you know, 1.8 acres between the two parcels. You see a long skinny one here, and then the slightly wider one here. This is all one property, will be developed as such. Out behind it, there's, you know, you know, quite a bit of open space here. Again, currently zoned mixed use, and they've, you know, Danco Communities does not own the property. Dan Johnson and his group own, own the property, but this is being proposed by Danco Communities. I know there have been some concern that, you know, we, you know, continue to work with a limited number of developers, and I just wanted to remind the council and the community that their own, their- community that their own, their, you know, this is kind of a niche market. Not every developer out there is working in the affordable housing market. And so, you know, when we put these, you know, calls out for, for projects, or when we, you know, go back and work with our, you know, project proponents that we have history with and know that they are, you know, proven in the community, it does tend to, you know, reinforce those relationships. But I do want to stress that, you know, we are open and willing to work with anyone who's willing to bring affordable housing to our community. So I look forward to hearing from all those other developers out there that are interested in that as well. Again, back to the project. This project has, as I mentioned in the staff report, has had some, some, you know, it's a brownfield, it's had some lead identified on it. It's currently got an open, you know, case with the water board. It has not been closed, meaning that the contamination hasn't been cleared yet. So those are, you know, some of the issues that will need to be cleared through pre-development work before this site is ready for development. And so that's one of the things we're proposing to fund. Project description on this site, you know, again, this is an infill project. That will come with its own, you know, bumps and bruises. You know, it's surrounded by a single-family neighborhood and, you know, would allow for higher density, much higher density development than, you know, surrounding area for it. So that's something you need to be aware of. That's based on current zoning. That's, that's not a decision that you have to make, but you should be aware of that. Again, the detail is to be determined with, with the pre-development loan studies and the financing package that's put together to fund construction of this site. But right now, Danco Communities is proposing to have a mixed-income project. They probably would be, at this point, targeting that higher workforce housing, 80% area median income, and would likely have a component that would have market rate housing as well. So it would be a first of its kind in Arcata if it, if it does come together that way. We don't have any mixed-income projects that do not have, you know, rent restrictions. We have some mixed-income projects where you could either be 80% or 50% area median income, but we don't have any market rate and then also restricted unit projects. They are proposing, at this point, at least conceptually, to, you know, continue to maintain, you know, a commercial component. When I spoke with their representative, they were very open to what, you know, the community is, you know, is wanting to see in this project. And so, you know, I think through some of this pre-development work, there would be some community engagement to, you know, to verify what, what the community need is. With this project, at, you know, at, you know, at this point, the existing businesses on the site would not be affected. They would continue to operate, but obviously, if the site was redeveloped, those businesses would have to be relocated at least temporarily. And so that's another factor to consider. And similar to the other project, the number of restricted units would really depend on funding ultimately, but we would be looking to get at least one unit based on this initial pre-development funding. What the pre-development loan sets in motion for this particular project is the brownfield assessment and remediation. That work would, you know, had explicit conversations that we would need to, you know, ensure that the project was clean and ready for, you know, housing development, obviously, with that project proponent. And, you know, again, with this one, we would, you know, commit to partnering for the project, you know, at least for that portion of the project that was, you know, affordable housing. And then, again, they're looking primarily at using these funds to do design and engineering work in addition to the, you know, the soils work they'll need to do. This site doesn't require any special, you know, you know, zoning changes or anything like that. There will be planning permits that they'll be using this work for. We'd also be, you know, any, we haven't evaluated it for what level of CQ we'll need to do on it, what environmental work we'll need to do on it yet. But if any environmental studies are required, they could use these pre-development funds to help pay for those as well. The policy considerations really, you know, minor in this particular case in terms of, you know, it already being a commercial mixed-use project. But, you know, you do need to, as I mentioned, be aware that, you know, there will be concern among neighbors. I'm absolutely confident of that. It is an infill project. Loan terms are real similar, again, 150,000 at 1%, 1.5% interest for 55 years. You know, again, these would be residual receipt payments and also beginning after occupancy. The number of restricted units, again, would be proportional to the city's investment or other investments that require those affordable units, looking to have a mixed-income project here. And again, the same provision for repayment or replacement if the project does not materialize. In this particular instance, you know, I, I set the repayment requirements the same across both loans, because it didn't seem to make sense to me to have, you know, differences in the way that these loans were structured. You know, certainly, I think that, you know, Danco would have the ability to, you know, to perform on a loan at a much, you know, higher level than, than Arcata House Partnership would. If we required Arcata House Partnership to pay back $150,000, you know, in a five-year term or something like that, you know, that would basically sink them. And so, you know, that is something that you can consider here if you wish to, but I guess I'd, I'd put forward that, you know, there may be other housing developers, and just having a programmatic approach to this seems to make sense to me. I think there's a lot more risk on the first project than there is on this project. Property's already owned by them. They, they have been proposing to do this project for years and years already anyway. And so this, this gives them a little bit of boost, a little bit of pre-development money to nudge them in the direction to, to get this project done early. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll open it up. Yeah, no, I'm gonna start it this end this time. So, yeah, please go ahead, Stacy.
Actually, I don't think I have any questions on this one. It seemed a lot more straightforward as I was reading through our agenda. The things that I do like about it, I like that it is workforce housing that we, we always talk about needing more of. It's not agricultural land, and it doesn't need annexation. And the other thing is just looking at the map of where affordable housing is, there is none that far in that, in that region. And so I think that that would be great to have more affordable housing. I do, because there is nothing like that in that region, I, I do expect that we will get a lot of concerns and pushback, but we're used to that, so that'll be okay. So anyways, I, I, it's a lot of, it's an easier decision for me.
Yeah, I have nothing to add, Stacy. I think I echo your comments.
Yeah, agreed. I like to see that they're looking at mixed-use as well. I know a lot of folks that live in that area that, that miss the good old days of Bayside Market and having, you know, a little corner store they can go shop at or something easily accessible there. So there's not a lot there, especially, you know, being located next to an elementary school as well. And so I think that's gonna, you know, to encourage housing and housing, you know, families that want to live there and be able to send their kids to school and that easy transportation access as well. And, you know, looking that we're updating that, that street there and improving the safety there, I think it makes sense to, you know, be looking at putting housing there. My one concern is, is the contamination. But I guess, I mean, as, as we move forward in, in these funds, they are going to, I mean, have to go through that, that process. What does, I mean, what does that look like, really? And, I mean, I guess it's pretty speculative of, you know, whether or not they're gonna be able to get the go-ahead to be able to develop and have cleaned it up effectively, or, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, the, the water board, as I mentioned earlier, is already, you know, has an open case on this particular site. And so they would be establishing the standards to which the site would need to be remediated so that it would support, for, support housing. And so that would be one of the first studies that they would want to do because, you know, characterizing it, identifying what it's gonna take to clean it up may affect how feasible it is for them, you know, to, you know, to come forward, or that will help them to identify what resources they'll need to, to fully clean it up. But, yeah, the short answer is, is yes, this, this site will have to be remediated, you know, the contamination before it's developed.
Thank you, David. I'll pass it on this way.
Great. So like my fellow council members, I do like the project. I did have a couple of questions and comments. As you pointed out, it has been years and years that they haven't done anything with it. My understanding is it was 2001 was the first, when they had the project going. So I guess I'm just kind of wondering, like, why has it sat so long? And then will the city be on the hook for the remediation of this at all? No, okay. And then, I lived across the street from Jacobi Creek School for years and years, and I gotta tell you, it was insane with the drop-off and pickup, but hopefully, there can be something done about that. I know we're doing a lot of with the roundabout and all of that. Could you tell me what that market rate might be for the workforce housing? And then my other question is, is there any way that we can guarantee that there will be some community engagement done? And I think that was it. And I, too, am concerned about the brownfield, of course.
Yeah. I guess last time we did it, we got all the questions first. This time, I think we're doing it where I'm answering them one by one, so changing the rules. So the, the city will not be on the hook. We, we kind of shook our heads, but just so that the, the public can hear that answer, too. This is Danco's property. We'd be loaning them money to characterize and clean up the property. Well, not probably to clean it up, but to characterize it and identify a cleanup solution. And, you know, that's, it's completely on them. We have no, no relationship to that. In terms of the, you said market rate for workforce housing, so I want to be clear that the units that are reserved for 80% area median income, which you could think of as workforce housing, would be restricted based on the, the rent limits that HUD sets out every year. Currently, it's around, you know, for a two-bedroom, it's around 785, I think. The, the market rate, and the reason why I'm distinguishing is because it'll be market rate housing, that will likely be moderate and above-moderate rentals. And so those wouldn't be restricted in the same way. We wouldn't have any provision saying that you must rent at X dollars. Now, I do want to say that, you know, based on the conversations that we had around inclusionary zoning when we were talking about it at our study session, there was a proposal put forward to, you know, try and come up with a solution for, you know, moderate income, inclusionary zoning requirements. And, you know, they, at this point, I haven't figured out a way to make them make sense. The, the incomes for moderate income, even on the very low end of the spectrum, to use the calculations to establish a rent limit, every time we work those up, the, the rent limit comes up higher than what the current market rate is, just the open market rate. And so, so I just wanted to be clear that, you know, the market rate is what the market will bear. So those will be above-moderate and moderate income units, 120% higher. You'd asked a question about whether there'll be additional public comment. And, you know, certainly, the amount and type of public comment really depends on the process that the project goes through ultimately for funding and for approval. As a, you know, the current zoning and the type of development would require, at the very minimum, a public hearing before the Planning Commission for a design review. Folks could, you know, certainly come out and, and speak at those design review. Danco typically has some other funding associated with it that has, you know, affordability restrictions. Those have their own, you know, public comment requirements. But at this point, you know, we're just talking about a pre-development, so I don't have any detail about what specific engagement would happen. I know they are interested in finding out, you know, you know, I think that they, they'd be happy to not provide a mixed-use, so a commercial component, if that's what the community wanted, but they're also open to, you know, making sure that whatever commercial component goes into that is something the community wants. So I think they're envisioning some kind of public process. We just haven't gotten there and talked about.
And I forgot a question. I apologize. So we're still working on the general plan and zoning. Do we, did he say, like, how many units they're thinking about? And you probably said that, and it's late. And then the other question is, do we, building height? Wondering what they are proposing or thinking in relation to as we establish those zoning, you know, in our general plan outside of the Gateway Area Plan?
I don't have a specific unit count. I don't know exactly what the, what the project, you know, concepts are that they have. They haven't done that conceptual work in detail yet. That's what this pre-development work would help pay for.
So we're not appro, it's gonna go before the Planning Commission and all of those wonderful things. Right now, we're just kind of asking questions, getting a feel of what they're thinking so that we would feel good about doing the pre-development fund approval.
Correct, yeah. And also just, I was also gonna add to that, that under the proposed zoning, 80 units would be allowable under the commercial mixed-use on that site, roughly.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to add that it's an interesting lot because all the neighbors, you start slowly going up the hill. And so this is a flat lot down below, and the neighbors up on top, some of them will be actually looking down on top of the building in the future, and when that happens. And I do know in the past, when Danco's talked about doing any kind of development on that, that the neighbors have come out. There will be comment, and there, there will be a lot of it. And there's one neighbor in particular that is really, really concerned about any development on that property. So, but I, I support it because I think we, we really need to have market rate housing to help out with the people that don't want to live in their homes anymore, and they would like to live in an apartment, and they can now sell their home and move into an apartment. And this is something that we've been looking forward to, or should I say, been looking forward to since the 1970s, that there would be an opportunity like this. So you want to take public comment, and then afterwards I'll make a motion?
I do want to take public comment. Okay, let's open it up for public comment. If you'd like to comment on this specific loan for Danco Communities, please make your way to the podium.
Sarah Bean again. Maybe it's my ignorance speaking, but it seemed like Danco seems to be a successful company. Why would we have to lend them $150,000 to do this? Secondly, I do wonder why it's been sitting undeveloped for however many years. And thirdly, coming from a parent who has a nine-year-old who got lead poisoning living in this community, I'm very concerned about remediation projects, about people maybe removing just enough top soil so that the soil tests clean, and then leaching happens underneath, and you wonder why your child isn't speaking and is diagnosed with autism. And there's a 400% increase in autism in Humboldt County alone in all of California. And there's a huge correlation between the contamination of the soils here with lead and, I can't remember the other name of the, the chemical that seals the ends of the logs, but I would be very concerned about techniques that are used to minimize legal responsibility that could then end up creating more harmful environments for our children to grow up in, especially it being right across the street from a school. Not have, and I have four children, and my background is in early childhood education, and to watch my three-year-old turn almost four and not say "mom" because there was lead contamination, most likely not only in the old Victorian home we live in, but the Windsong's housing complex, that they had to remove six inches of soil, brought new soil back in, retested it, of course, it was fine then, built a brand-new housing complex, a beautiful home, then my son couldn't, didn't have proper neurological development. So I'd be very, very, very concerned with remediation going on right across from the school and minimal accountability to a company that probably has a lot of money to begin with. Why are we lending them $150,000? that probably has a lot of money to begin with. Why are we lending them $150,000?
My name's Joanne McGarry, and I ditto exactly what Sarah just said.
My name's Angela Kokon, and I'm one of the terrible neighbors of the Danko Project. This is a kind of a rerun of what happened between 2001 and 2006. Mr. Danko brought in plans, had a mixed use, this and that. I think that he proposed a three-story building along the back of the parcel, which might have impacted some of those people above it. But, you know, it was the, he didn't want to do the remediation. And as a great steward of the property, he had the Quonset hut sandblasted. And we calculated ballpark that it was between 15 and 20 pounds of lead that came off of the Quonset hut. So we didn't have much faith in him being a good steward for the, for the place. It is a brownfield. And they had never done any testing on the back part of the parcel. And the area right along there, the property line, it has buried cars there. I saw them with my own eyes. And the, the testing that they did in the, in the, in the part that faces the street, we never, the people never believed that they had done enough to adequately describe what had happened there. There was a, they did, let's see, one of the worst things was the joking that was done by the planning commission here in Arcata about the cider mill technique where the used cars were crushed. And in the contents of the transmissions, the brake fluid, the radiators, the differentials, those things basically came out of the crushing machine into the ground. So we, and that was before Danko owned it. So those are, those are the, there are many things, and it's not just the current owner. And as far as I knew, none of the people in the neighborhood were concerned about building in there. We, we think low-income housing would be great. My own house is low-income. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. I would like the community development director to explain the funding per year on this program. We have $176,000 that can be spent per year. The plan on the city's website shows that starting in 2019, if there have been other projects that have received this funding, I'd like to know about that and how that's worked out. The director's staff report says there was a closure letter on the contamination. Tonight, he says there is not a closure on the contamination. As has been mentioned, why does Danko need predevelopment funds? They have owned the property for 23 years. I'd like to know whether these funds, or this funding was put out as a request or proposal, both to the community in Arcata and the wider community, see if other people are interested in building low-income housing. The, okay, the, for a building that has been constructed, the payments are made from what are called residential residual receipts, excuse me, which is the gross income minus expenses. What happens if there's no profit? What happens if the loans are structured so that the project has negative cash flow, which can happen, and sometimes is done on purpose, then the loan is not ever repaid? The terms of the loan, as we've discussed, is the project is not built, and the borrower has 50 years to pay it back. And as I suggested, that with Danko, you could easily say that it has to be paid back in three years or something like that. We have talked about, what does 80% look like? What does 120% median income look like? HUD takes, looks at 30% of the gross income. So $25 an hour equals paying about $1,001.50 for rent at today's rates. This is 30% on an after-tax basis, which I think is much more realistic. It's 44% of a person's income would go to rent if the rent were around $1,150. The figures, when you convert the HUD figures to hourly figures, it's based on working 52 weeks a year, 40 hours a week. Unless the employer pays for your sick pay or vacation, then the annual, the hourly rate would be higher. 120% is actually higher than market rate in Arcata today. We all think, well, rents may go higher. But when we talk about what is workforce rent, it's, it's around 100% of HUD figures. It's unfortunate, you know, because it still represents 40 or 50% of a person's salary. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Sable with the North Coast Environmental Center. Happy to see proposals for affordable housing, and definitely precipitate a lot of the concern about, like, making sure that contamination is taken care of and remediation is done properly. But also want to reflect the concern around, like, what is actually affordable? And seeing, like, hearing council members also reflecting some concern around that, I'd like to request that you guys maybe make more of an assessment on development actually being affordable before moving forward with any, with this loan approval or development approvals that are being proposed as affordable with an income that is potentially not really affordable for most of our population. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other in-person comment before we move online? All right, seeing none, we'll go to Zoom.
All right, our first speaker is call-in user. Go ahead, call-in user. If you're on a call-in user without a name, go ahead. You should be getting a request to unmute. All right, let's go to Lisa. Go ahead, Lisa.
Hi. Yes, I wanted to chime in that I remember Rogers Garage with scrap vehicles piled all the way up the hill behind the Quonset hut. I also remember the effort made by the neighborhood to ensure that remediation of the site was completed prior to development. However, cleanup was never done on the majority of the site. And as Angela mentioned, Danko contributed to the toxicity of the site. The toxicity on the site includes lead, cadmium, copper, zinc, and chromium. I spoke with the Regional Water Quality Control Board this morning. The site is not closed. And I appreciate that David clarified that tonight, since he mentioned that it was in the staff report. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Rich. Go ahead, Rich. I'm sorry, go ahead, Chris.
Oh, that's better. Chris Richards here. I get that all the time, so that's fine. Just a few things on this particular loan proposal vision. One of the things that strikes me with this particular proposal is we're talking about a fairly large company, or I should say corporation, that is well-respected throughout California for getting grant money, creating housing, doing what they can, you know, to make money and keep their company going, as well as build housing. And, you know, kudos for that. I did notice, I'm not there, so maybe there is a representative of the corporation there, if there's any particular questions. But maybe, maybe there is no one there for this particular segment, a representative to at least show up for this type of funding. It seems like a pittance. You know, I look at the history, it's not too far back, but, you know, we talked earlier about the failed Creekside project, which failed for a number of reasons. But that project would have given the community ownership opportunities. And I'm looking at this project's proposal, and I don't see the word ownership or condos or any of those kind of ideas. It's another similar project that would lead to profit. I don't want to get into the, the conversation about the contamination of that site. I remember going and picking through antique cars with hard-to-find parts. And I know, I know what happens when they clean, you know, clean up that type of spot. And that is a huge concern for the future of that, whichever direction any kind of development would go. But, you know, back to the Creekside development that failed, the Danko pocketed a pretty good chunk of money on that. And I just, it just, you know, when I first read this, I, I just laughed out loud. I was such a curiosity that, you know, the city's willing to loan them money with, a pittance of money for a company like that, and money that's valuable that could possibly go to someone else that maybe needs predevelopment money more. So, and I would, I would promote that you hold off on this particular loan. You've got some time. You could always give them the loan later. They've been waiting, was it 21, 24 years, without moving forward. So I, I think there's other ways of looking at using.
Okay, thank you, Chris. That is your three minutes. Thank you so much. Do we have anybody else online?
All right, we're going to try one more time. Call-in user one, go ahead.
Hello. Good evening, council members and staff. I was shocked to hear that there's another housing development project planned for this very heavily contaminated brownfield across the street from Jacobi Creek Elementary School.
Up, she got on!
And are you able to hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I didn't hear, somebody screamed something. I don't know. And the staff proposes that it will be a CEQA-exempt project. Putting housing on a brownfield with no CEQA compliance is unconscionable. This property was a car wrecking yard for over 75 years, where cars were literally crushed on the ground, and the oil and chrome and batteries were buried, as well as cars. The heavy contamination in some places goes as deep as 17 to 20 feet below ground. The oil, lead, and toxic contamination at the former Rogers Garage is deep, and it's extensive. And I suggest that the council familiarize yourselves with the site and the level of contamination, as many Bayside neighbors have in years past, before approving any funding towards future development here. The Regional Water Quality Control Board made it clear to the property owner many years ago, when he tried unsuccessfully to develop the property with a preschool, commercial business space, and housing, that if he was ever to develop the property in future, that he would have to remove, at a minimum, one foot of topsoil on the entire back portion of the property, which is over three-quarters of the 1.8-acre site. This required work has never been done because it was cost prohibitive. Any footing, foundations, retaining walls on this sloped site would have to be removed and sent to a toxic soil facility. To date, only the front portion of the site has been remediated to the satisfaction of the regional board and the county, and only water runoff has been monitored for the back portion of the property. And this area has not been remediated by the owner or closed by the regional board. We have the cart before the horse here with this proposition. And I encourage you not to adopt the resolution until the cleanup has been completed and signed off by the regional board. Then fund plans for architects and engineers to design housing that we find out tonight will not be low-income or even affordable. And let's build on a remediated site, not a brownfield. As Mr. Lawyer said this evening about the previous project you discussed and didn't approve, he advised you not to move forward on a project that may be, quote unquote, "undevelopable." And the extensive remediation required here is, as he said, out of the city council's, out of the city's control. So please do not fund this project. Let's get it remediated before we think about putting 80 units or
Thank you.
on this property. Thank you. Good night. My name's Kathleen Stanton.
Thank you, Kathleen. All right, do we have any other speakers on Zoom this evening?
We do.
David, could you please just give a brief clarification of how the PLHA funds work? And, right, isn't that a pot of money that runs out at a specific time and, and what that timeline is?
Yeah, the PLHA money has annual allocations based on the amount of transactions that happen that have that $75 fee. Those go into a pot, and then they're split up based on, you know, formula that the state runs. And then the jurisdictions have to spend those monies. Otherwise, they are disencumbered. That means they get cleared away. The state, they go back into the state pool. The 2019 money, and we confirmed this with our, our rep just today, the 2019 money is, it starts expiring on April 30th of next year. And so what, what they've said that we need to be able to do is to demonstrate to them that we have, you know, entered into a loan for, you know, those amounts of money. And then, once we've demonstrated that, we can draw those funds down locally, and, and then they will be preserved. Each year, there's a new allocation. And so the, you know, the city will be, you know, in the same position next April with it, not this coming 2024, but April 2025, for the monies that were allocated in 2020, and so on and so forth. And so, you know, you may have noticed that our department has been busy. We had intended to work on, you know, getting some of these projects earlier in the year, and that just, we just did not have the time to be able to bring that to you. And so we're really trying to capture this first year's money before we, you know, lose the ability to do so. We have, you know, just a few months left to be able to do that.
And how competitive have these been? I mean, do we get a lot of requests for this specific funding? Basically, what I'm leading at is who is Danko beating out, or are they really the only ones applying for this funding?
Yeah. So at this point, you know, we traditionally approach projects in one of a couple of different ways. And most of our projects are built based on, you know, the relationships that we've developed with affordable housing partners. They come to us and say, "Look, I've got this project, you know, that I want to do. I have the property. I'm looking for grant funding. Can we partner together?" We get, you know, a nod from the council to do that, adopting a resolution, saying, "Yeah, let's go for the grant funds." And that's, that's traditionally how it works. You know, so with this particular funding source, one of the other, one of the other activities in our PLHA, for example, is to try and develop a accessory dwelling unit loan program, which would be great. You know, we've been watching Eureka try and develop theirs. That's one of the activities that we can do with this funding. But I can guarantee you, we're going to lose our first year's funding if I try and develop an ADU program in the next six months and deploy it, so that we've got loans ready to use them. So recognizing the timelines, we instead went with the, you know, the former approach, which was, you know, checking in with all of the partners that we've worked for before. You know, we inquired with everyone. Housing Humboldt said they just didn't have a project at this time. They don't have the capacity to dedicate to a project. And so they passed. Arcata House Partnership and Danko each said, "Hey, look, I've got this project that I want to do." And so we are bringing those forward, you know, at this time to, to, you know, see if the council wants to move forward. If it's not the right time, you know, it is relatively speaking, a very small amount of money. It's $180,000 in total that we're trying to lock down for, for this coming year. You know, I think it'd be great for us to take advantage of it. But if, for whatever reason, the council is just not feeling like now is the time to do these projects, and you want to, you know, pivot and do something else, you know, if we, if we use, lose the first year's allocation, it's, you know, it's certainly not the end of our affordable housing program. We'll keep, keep muscling on, keep marching on. I also wanted to address the comment about CEQA, just to really be clear. This This action you're taking is exempt from CEQA because the impacts of whatever the projects are going to be are too speculative for us to identify what they are at this point. The project themselves will be going through a CEQA process. I don't know at this point what that CEQA process will be. It may be a full blown EIR. It may be exempt. A lot of it is dependent on what we find out through this pre-development work. And so to the last commenter's comment about this being qualifying for a CEQA exemption, I just wanted to be clear with you all that that's, we're not talking about an exemption for the project itself.
I just had a quick question. You said that you approached folks, so we didn't actually put anything out into the community. Did, were there any other than the three that have been approached? Did we talk to Pacific Builders or any other developers? And I guess my question is, is this $150,000 or $180,000 going to make or break this project moving forward? Because, I mean, as everyone knows, Danco has a lot of money. Why is it now, all of a sudden, they're going to do something with it? And I'm really saddened that we can't get anything ready for the ADUs because I really feel like the community wants to see something come to fruition with that. There's just no way in six months that we can get anything ready to use that money towards the ADUs.
But we can for the next year of funding. There's, there's a yearly allocation, right? And so, you know, once we get something like that on the books, we can then, you know, use this funding for that exact purpose, once we have our own, you know, ordinance and system surrounding ADUs written.
So what I'm, oh, you're finished, Kimberly.
Our next was next.
So from my understanding is we spend the $180,000 on this or we lose it, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to say yes at this point. I mean, if you say, no, this isn't the kind of project that we want and this is the kind of project we want, I will, you know, attempt to do that. This is, you know, fairly low hanging fruit. This is an easy process for us to do. You know, I would love to be able to say, yeah, I put it out to, you know, the world in an RFP and we had, you know, these two responses. And so I know definitively that there's no other projects out there. You know, balancing the work that we have in our department and trying to, you know, meet the, you know, council's objectives for affordable housing, trying to, you know, secure all of the different funding sources that we have going on, you know, to the, to the maximum extent we possibly can to bring as much affordable housing to, you know, the residents of Arcata is kind of what we've been focused on in the last couple of years. So that's, that's where we're landing right now, but you know, we can, we can rethink it.
And before Danco can move any further with any kind of construction, they're going to have to submit a really detailed plan for remediation, I'm assuming.
Absolutely, yeah. Again, the water board is the decision maker ultimately on whether or not the site is remediated.
Okay.
And so, you know, given there are different levels of remediation requirements depending on the, the end use, residential creates the highest threshold for remediation.
I would hope so, yeah.
And so they would be, you know, they would be held to that account. And it's possible that, you know, they go through and do the phase one, phase two reports and as one commenter said, you know, that it becomes infeasible for them.
Sure.
At which point they'd be on the hook for paying us back for the money they spent on those studies because they, they weren't producing the housing there. Or they'd have to give us, you know, housing in another project, a new housing unit, some other, in some other project if the terms of the loan as are currently written were approved.
All right. Fair enough. Thanks.
So, well, one of the things about Danco, Dan, when he started out, he started out quite young. He must've been maybe just 20 when he started in the trades. And he has been able to, it's taken a lot of years. I think it took him 10 years before he could finally manage the low income housing projects that he's done on his own. He always had to have a partner. And so it was a niche that he's gotten into and it's been valuable for many areas in California and for us up here to have someone with that niche. I was talking to another developer recently about a job in Eureka and he said, you know, I don't have that niche. I don't have that learning curve in order to do what Dan has been able to do all these years, which he has learned to do. And this developer said to me that it would be something, I would have to start from zero and go through the same process that he did. It would take him 10 years to finally get that, where you can manage your own property. So I, I personally think that we want housing in Arcata. So wherever we can get people that are interested in doing pre-development on housing, we should move forward. Yes, on every project, there's an issue. I'll just give you an example. So the build, property I bought on the corner of Ninth and H and developed, I, there had been a fire there. So I had to take out five feet of soil because that was a requirement because of a fire on the premises and replace that with new soil. So you never know what your requirements are going to be until you get into the specifics of getting through the process. So I think to figure out what the process is before is impossible. And we need to, want more housing, then we should move forward and get something going. And if, as David said, if he can't meet the requirements to get it clean, then it's going to sit there with Rogers Garage or whatever for the, its rest of its life.
So, I mean, my comments are a little all over the place because I've kind of listened to public comment, staff, council members, so I've got several things. First of all, I just wanted to point out, like, when staff points out, like, we don't have the capacity to, you know, to do something in a certain amount of time, a big part of that is from us because we dictate the workloads. So we, and we have been a very ambitious council that has really asked a lot of staff. So I just want to be really clear, when staff says we don't have capacity, that is not a failure on their part. It's a balancing act. As far as Danco, I don't know about their, their profit or their business model. Regarding the business model for housing, for the affordable housing, part of the reason that they have that, from what I've gathered, is because they've learned how to put all these pieces together. This being one of the pieces. Because they are aware of where there's money available in the system. It's just their business model. And so they're able to piece a bunch of things to make these projects pencil out. So I'm not arguing like for or against Danco as a company. I'm, I'm, I'm here with my housing crisis hat on, trying to figure this out. Everybody's already talked about the cleanup, you know, and if, if, if people weren't aware of the cleanup, I think, you know, the whole community is aware of it now. So, you know, there's lots of eyes on it. And it'll be 80 units of housing, which we need. And it's, we're not taking money, you know, maybe it would be a different story if, if we were debating over two entities, but we have one entity asking for money that was given to us for this purpose. It's part of their piece. If we don't choose to give it to them, that's fine, but we just give it back to the state. So I, I'm, you know, I'm in favor of moving forward on it because we need housing.
So I'd like to make a motion.
Are you ready for it?
Yeah, I was next in the queue here, thanks though. I just, how long does it take to do remediation? Somebody said out here, the cart before the horse. And I'm just wondering, like, if it doesn't pass, and, and so, I guess to Stacy's point is that they're successful because they know how to take advantage of the perks. Not, not in a negative way, but just that they know how to find these monies and that's their business model and that's why they're successful. But if we aren't reaching out to our other developers, then they don't know and they can't take advantage of it. And I guess I'm just wondering if, if we don't give this money, does that mean it sits for another 23 years? What has stopped them?
No, no, I'm not talking about us. I'm talking about Danco. If we don't give them the money, will they just fail to move forward on the project? Is this 150 the breaking, deciding factor for them to move forward?
I think all we can share is that they haven't moved forward to date and they are interested in using this money to try to jumpstart something. So if it's not granted to them, we can't say, you know, whether or not they would move forward, but the past history would indicate no.
I, I agree with my fellow council people that we need housing. And if this is going to make this project move forward and it's going to create housing and it's money that we would lose, then I guess we should go for it. But I just would hope that in the future, we might just consider giving other developers an opportunity also to have a piece of the pie.
So that would be out of, out of the area developers. I think we would have to go to San Francisco, Reading and so forth because we have a limited pool here. The other thing, you're asking how long it takes for remediation, we could look at the property where North Coast Environmental Center has down on Ninth Street. And they've been in remediation, I think now for close to 10 years.
So we might not have this housing for close to 10 years.
No, we, well, we might not, we might not, but I mean, it's worth a try. If they can't remediate the property, then they have to pay us back. So it's not like, it's not like they're going to keep the money. So we're saying, yes, please try to develop this. And by authorizing this, it also signifies to them that we want to work with them. So I really just don't, if it was, you know, our personal money that we could spend on something else, I think it would be a different conversation, but I just, I, I don't, I don't have a hesitation on this because I think we're, we're covered.
And you know, it just really bothers me with the conversation, you know, we have, I feel like we need housing. I think people believe we need housing, but we don't have the overwhelming support for housing. And so I would like to move for the motion, which no longer, this doesn't hold for very long, to keep anything. But I think it's a move resolution number 234-17, a resolution, the City of Arcata, authorizing pre-development loan to Danco communities.
Do you want the amount in there of 180?
Yeah, it's for 180,000.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Yes, for 180,000 as suggested by our community development department.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously. We have one more item this evening, but I'm, I'm hearing a need for a break and maybe a discussion about time check here real quick. All right. Five, five minutes. All right. All right, folks, we are back for our final business item tonight, which is item E, a public hearing for closeout of Arcata's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG. A whole bunch of numbers. Project in review of accomplishments. I know as a council, we've done a lot of CDBG closeout and are pretty familiar with this, but any, any high points, Director Lawyer, or should we just open it right up for public comment?
Please just open it. Yeah, we're required to report on our, our accomplishments. That's what the staff report does.
Do we have any public comments on the Community Development Block Grant programs? Not seeing any in person. Do we have any online?
None, none online.
All right. And not online. At this point, I will entertain motions.
And to be clear, it would be to direct staff to authorize the city manager, that second bullet point.
Yeah, so moved. I direct the staff to authorize the city manager to sign the closeout certification and submit final reports and closeout package to California Housing and Community Development, CDBG Division.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to item 12 for our wonderful patient community and, and thank you guys for, for sticking with us tonight. This opens up oral and written communications. Again, this is a time for the community to provide input on items that are not on the agenda. Know that pursuant to the Brown Act, we cannot discuss or take action on items listed on the posted agenda. And at the end of communications, council may respond to statements. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. If you are here in person, please line up at the podium, or if you are on Zoom, raise your hand or press star nine. Okay.
Hi, it's me again. So we've made it clear that you are not ready to pass a resolution calling for a ceasefire in emergency humanitarian aid, which isn't really an acceptable position to take. And I'll explain just why, just with some numbers here. So since October 7th, approximately 1,400 Israelis have been killed, 5,400 have been injured. And when we go over to Gaza, at this point, over 8,805 Palestinians in Gaza have been killed. Over 22,240 people have been injured. And this is just, about two thirds of that are children. So whether or not you're ready to pass a resolution on this now, doesn't really matter because you need to take a stance against this. This is a literal definition of genocide and the numbers have probably just increased since we've been sitting here in this, these last four hours of this meeting. So I think these numbers can speak for themselves. This isn't a two sided issue. We are not calling for an eradication of the other side because we're calling for protection and for an end to this genocide and for basic human rights to be extended to Palestinians as equally as they are to Israelis throughout all of Palestine. So we demand a ceasefire. This is the most humane, humane response that we can give to the Palestinians throughout all of Palestine. It is inhumane to. It is inhumane to not condemn this as a genocide, to not condemn Israel as an illegal apartheid occupying power that is committing a genocide against Palestinians. It is unacceptable to take a neutral stance. There are plenty of Jewish people throughout the world, plenty here, that will tell you the same thing I am. It's not a matter of being anti-Semitic. It's not a matter of two sides. It's a matter of humanity and not being, showing double standards in the context of occupation, war crimes, collective punishment of a population. Palestinian lives matter. Muslim lives matter. And you need to take a stance to condemn this because it is unacceptable with you holding a power that you have to use your voice to condemn this. You know, the city of Richmond just passed its own resolution condemning the genocide of Palestine, calling for a ceasefire, calling for emergency humanitarian aid. As a progressive city, we need to be doing the same thing.
I see that most of the world would like a ceasefire. Most of the countries of the world have asked for a ceasefire. I watched as the UN turned their backs on. We were some of the only people, the United States, Israel, and a handful of other countries that didn't demand a ceasefire. So our federal government is not listening to us. I'm here at this meeting because this is a local government. And I know the United States, they did a poll, and there is the majority of people in the United States want a ceasefire. I listened to a General Doug McGregor talk about how we are walking our way into a Third World War because we've got the warmongers that are driving this thing. There's a lot of people in Israel that don't want us to do what we're doing to Palestine. And I say "we" because it's my tax dollars and yours. This group of people, the Palestinians, have been marginalized. They've been vilified. They've been treated like worse than dogs. And now they're getting the ship bombed out of them. Excuse my language. There was over six thousand missiles. These are the best, most effective missiles in the world. And this was two weeks ago. They had already dropped six thousand missiles on the Palestinians. These are mothers, sisters, brothers. And each time one of those missiles falls, I think there's another person that will be willing to go and respond the way that people responded in Israel on October seventh. They've been kept down. Their voices have been silenced. And I'm here speaking for them, their people. And I'm gonna ask you this. If this were Jewish people and they were sitting in a concentration camp and all those meds, like shooting fish in a barrel, and all those missiles were coming down on them under the guise that they're gonna get Hamas and get the hostages out. I've listened to lots of different military people, experts, talk about how this is not even the way to do that. This is collective punishment. It's wrong. It's wrong. And we want to be on the right side of history. I pride myself in being from Arcata. This is a progressive place. I've seen you pass resolutions. And I've seen you do sanctions and say, we're a sanctionary city for this and that, and more frivolous things. This is a crisis. And these people will be all but wiped out. And what we're doing, the Arab world is watching. And they're wondering, why is the United States funding this? Why is Israel getting away with this? These are war crimes.
Thank you.
I think we need to take a stand as a city of Arcata. I think you need to say, what if it were happening to your people?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Montana. Good evening, council members. My name is Jasmine Jolly, and I'm an Arcata resident. In front of you, you have a copy of our proposed resolution in solidarity with the Palestinian people under occupation by Israel. It specifically calls on the city of Arcata to condemn apartheid, occupation, and antisemitism, and to take seriously the treaty of never again for any people anywhere. I want to directly thank Mayor Sarah Schaefer for your thoughtful and respectful response to our email. I understand why the city council usually does not, deals with issues that are hyper-local and rarely goes outside of the sphere of Humboldt County. I understand the fear of alienating members of your community, and it is something that we have considered in writing this resolution. To Councilmember Matthews or to your rabbi, I want to be clear that our resolution was not hastily written, nor is it one-sided. I have been extraordinarily intentional and considerate of all sides over the past three weeks and over the past decade, as I have learned about Israel, its creation, and the violence that has ensued since. During the pogroms that followed the Bolshevik Revolution, my family fled to the United States. Their ages were estimated incorrectly, and their names were changed. Of the family that I had in Europe in World War II, one survived. As someone raised to be proud of their Jewish heritage, I am doing everything I can to be thoughtful in the words that I choose, the messages that I send, and the way that I present myself. In the memory of my family who fled and who died and who had to live in fear and who were murdered, I have to stand with Palestinian people now. What I see from Israel and Zionist sources is a very intentional weaponization of the Holocaust and of Jewish suffering. How dare they use my history to perpetuate their narratives and to justify these atrocious actions? I see how they are using the grief and the fear that we Jewish people are feeling right now, today, that my family is feeling, to convince us that these acts of evil are necessary or are somehow permissible. I see how this fear of antisemitism has been used to convince people that we need Israel and how it has been used as a consistent reason for Israel's constant illegal expansion. I cannot allow my fear and my sadness to render me immobile and silent in the face of explicit, loud, and public evil. I stand with the brave Israeli protesters who are calling for a ceasefire and for a hostage exchange. I stand with brave, young Israeli people who are refusing to be conscripted into a military of a colonist entity. I know that a government is not its people. We call on you to pass this resolution because we care about our community. We want our community to thrive and to succeed and to be able to trust each other. We want them to trust you. If enough voices speak out against this occupation, if we stand with Richmond, what large cities will come next? What states will come next? How long do we have to remain silent?
Thank you.
Hello. So like, my money technically is being used to fund for this war. And I just want to express that I'm deeply uncomfortable with that. I'm just deeply uncomfortable with that. Like, I have read what's going on. In Palestine, it's fucking aggravating. I feel responsible for it. I feel like my money is being misused. I feel like I'm, I don't know. I feel responsible for this. It's fucking, sorry. It's very scary for me. And it's very frustrating that I feel that I don't have a say in what my money is being used for. And I don't have a say in where my money is going to. And it's just extremely, I don't even know how to describe that emotion of, but like frustration and anger and also like sadness that my money is going to weapons that are being used to mass murder families. I just don't want that. I'm deeply uncomfortable with that. Please, don't use my money for that, please. I know that you guys have shown that you guys listen to the constituents. Please listen to us. We don't want our money to be funding for this. We demand a ceasefire. This needs to stop. Like, we are responsible for this. We, I feel like we are no different than the people who are holding the weapons and murdering these people, murdering Palestinians and Muslims. I feel like we are no different. Our money is going to that. We are responsible. We are the weapons. And it's fucking, it's scary. I don't want that kind of responsibility. I don't want that kind of weight on my shoulders. I don't want, I don't want it. Please, I, please, we demand a ceasefire. This needs to stop. Please listen to us. We need to stop this genocide. Please. Our money shouldn't go to that. And the damage has been done. A lot of damage has been done against Palestinians. We need to take up responsibility too and send humanitarian aid because so many people have died. And we need to take up responsibility because we are responsible. The money has been used. The people have been murdered. The people have been massacred. Now we need to step up and send humanitarian aid and stop this. Please, listen to us.
Hello, council members. My name is Olivia Fox. I'm one of the co-authors for the resolution. I believe the city should pass this resolution standing in solidarity with Palestinian people. I know that a hastily written resolution could not help Israel or Palestine much, but a thoughtfully written resolution could. Please permit me your time as I explain. We all know that democracy is supposed to be of the people, for the people, and by the people. The most recent poll I was able to find came from October twentieth, showing agreement between Democrats and Republicans alike that the United States should call for a ceasefire and de-escalation escalation of violence in Gaza. The United States should leverage its close diplomatic relationship with Israel to prevent further violence and civilian deaths. This includes eighty percent of Democrats, fifty-seven percent of independents, and fifty-six percent of Republicans. War propaganda and media are trying to divide us, trying to equate supporting the ceasefire to supporting terrorism. But we aren't divided, not here, not in the US, not in the world. Protests and non-violent organizing across the globe are begging our respective leaders for ceasefire. We aren't divided, we just aren't being heard. Our reasoning for asking the city of Arcata to pass a resolution is in our hope that though our individual voices can be ignored, our calls to our representatives sent to voicemail, emails, and petitions ignored, protesters arrested and silenced, that that will not be the case when an entire city stands up. We are hoping that when we stand with Richmond, California, that more cities, counties, even states will follow. And that when standing together at this scale, we will no longer be ignored. Our resolution in front of you is not one-sided. We condemn the violence of Hamas in any, in all acts of antisemitism, including the October seventh massacre. We focus on Israel, however, because the state of Israel is disproportionately powerful compared to Palestine and thereby an oppressive regime that suppresses Palestine and has been since the state's creation since the nineteen forties. We do not ask you to pass this resolution thoughtlessly, nor without collaborating with the community members who have been involved in peace work for decades. We call for a resolution because the violence only continues to escalate, death tolls rise, and with silence and complacency, it will not end. The resolution is clear that violence on both sides is condemned. Israel is a colonist state imposed on Palestine by the United States and Great Britain, and it's supported unconditionally. But we as individuals are not our government. And in cases like this, we must stand against our government, especially when it is our tax money funding the past and current escalating atrocities. Just as we are not our government, the civilians of Israel and the civilians of Palestine are not theirs, and they both need our help. We are not claiming to know how to resolve the Israeli-Palestinian conflict long term, but it is essential that we intervene and stand for ceasefire now. We must stand for humanity and stand for peace and not let this divide us. Thank you.
Just to be clear, this is the city attorney. If the signs are being used to keep somebody from speaking or a form of intimidation, that would be something that we would have to deal with.
Oh, that wasn't a form of intimidation.
So you cannot, if somebody asks you to take the sign down, there are rules, you're not really supposed to have them anyways, but we wanted to be very open.
Rules that I can't have this sign?
If somebody takes you down because they're feeling intimidated, then we would need you to stop.
Rules that I can't have this sign? Who makes those rules?
They're governed by the state in terms of the general law cities and the conduct of things and the conduct of meetings, as well as the city's rules in terms of proper conduct of meetings. So you're not allowed to use speeches and stand behind people and use that as a form of intimidation, particularly if you've been asked to stop.
I wasn't trying to intimidate anyone.
I'm simply asking you.
She simply asked you to set the sign down.
I'm sorry.
So please.
I wish you all, all of us, peace. Shalom aleichem, assalam alaikum. My name is Judith Mayer, and I'm a Jewish Arcata resident. An Arcata resolution calling for an immediate humanitarian ceasefire and calling on all leaders in the US, Israel, and Gaza to embrace it could be appropriate. If the council does consider a resolution on the Gaza war, exercise extreme caution about what it would include and what it shouldn't. For example, wording that refers to genocide of Palestinians but fails to mention Hamas atrocities against Israelis or that denies Israel's right to exist and defend itself is unacceptable. Many of us have been exercising our rights as Americans, writing to congressmen, senators, the president, to put pressure on Netanyahu's government to halt the Gaza invasion, stop bombing civilians, stop attacks on Palestinians in the West Bank, and work toward ending the occupation. However, an Arcata resolution calling, calling out details of a humanitarian ceasefire, using words that will raise the risk of both antisemitism and Islamophobia here in Arcata, is not a role that the city government should take at this time. The city has used its power in the past to express a desire and a political impetus for peace. There are many issues on which the city government can speak to other levels of government and unified as a community. Depending on how a resolution is worded, this may be one of them. Please exercise caution if you decide that a resolution on the Gaza war is something that the council wishes to pursue. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I just want to say first that I don't think the resolution has anything anti-Semitic written in it. I haven't personally read it, but I heard it earlier, and I didn't hear anything that sounded like that. And secondly, if you guys can't see that this is something that affects you here, I'd like to remind you that you have the earth flag on the top of the flagpole. And I feel like that says as much as I need to.
Next speaker, please.
I just wanted to take the time to agree with the women who have taken the time to write the resolution. We've been protesting every Saturday for this, for the ceasefire, for peace, for humans to have the kindness in their heart that they're born with. And this is on everybody's hands, I think. As Americans, we have to take accountability and responsibility for this, even though we don't know where our tax dollars go. Now we do know where they went. And they went towards aid for the wrong reasons. Aid towards bombing children and innocent civilians who have no military training whatsoever. It went towards people who train our military, train our police in New York, to do bad things to us. I feel like this ceasefire really, it should be a no-brainer all around the world, really. I don't know why everybody's dragging their feet, like they don't see the heads cut off the kids and the innocent lives lost. I've been a custodian for about five years now. I took a pledge to help children, to help them learn. I took a pledge to help children, to help them learn, to help them experience life in the healthiest ways possible. I'm concerned, I have to take accountability too. I pay my taxes, and that's what it went towards, is the opposite of helping children, promoting fear and propaganda and lies and pain, nothing but pain and anguish. And I feel like this is not going to be resolved quickly. It's been going on for a long time now, it's been going on longer than I've been alive. And it should have been done a long time ago. I feel like the next step is to, again, read over that. Make sure that you guys do pass something. You have to pick a side on this. You have to. I know, I don't know you all personally, but I'm sure some of you have children of your own. You have to find a humanity within yourselves to stand up for change. And I'm sorry, but if Israel is defending itself against innocent children, if you have to defend yourself against children by killing them, you're the coward, and you've already lost. Please, if you don't like what it says on that sheet of paper right now, okay, but you guys have to pass something. You have to let the people know that we stand on the right side of history. We stand against genocide, against war crimes, and against abusing taxpayers' dollars. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lucas. I'm a healthcare worker and been here for two years now. I spent the first 18 years of my life in Richmond, California. And after, after that resolution was passed a couple weeks ago, just talking to friends and family in that area, I have, you know, dozens of family and friends still there. There's just a ton of overwhelming support. And you guys have seen the polls, in terms of, the majority of people in the country support a ceasefire. So I know, I know some of you can be swayed in terms of supporting that ceasefire eventually, but just thinking about how many people have died in the past two or three weeks now, the longer you wait, you know, if you come around eventually, yeah, great, I'm happy for that. But every week that passes, you know, thousands more are going to die. So just want to encourage that sense of urgency, because, you know, I know things move slow. It's politics, like, that's just the way it is. But, you know, it is a popular issue. It's something that can create a lot of grassroots enthusiasm for you guys, so I just hope you take that into consideration.
Hello. I don't have much to say, but I just need to ask, why is it so hard to see them as people, the Palestinian people? Why is this, why is it so hard to see them as humans? Why every time this conversation comes, there's always like an excuse for the carpet bombing that has been happening? Oh, but Hamas, oh, but this, oh, but that, but like, they're still people. Children are being killed who has nothing to do with Hamas or anything. Entire bloodlines are being killed, who have nothing to do with any of that. And, you know, why is it so hard to see them as people? There's always had to be like an excuse for it, you know? So, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Hi. I just wanted to talk about some of the things that I've heard tonight. Lots of different stuff. But I did hear your guys' excitement about everyone showing up. And so, one thing I just wanted to bring up was just how incredibly hypocritical it would make all of you guys look, and how disappointing it would be for you guys to get up here and give your land acknowledgement, and talk about how you guys, like, vow to make a difference in the settler colonialism that we currently live in, and then not, like, have any kind of statement towards ongoing colonization that's going on, and like, you know, whatever, whatever you want to call it, in different parts of the world, but you guys are afraid to take a stance on that, but you are so, like, proud of these values that you want to espouse before you begin the meeting. And so it just seems kind of ridiculous to me. And then also, I don't know your name, but whoever you are on the left, you said this is a centuries-old conflict, and like, this is the thing, it's always so complex, it's too complex for any of us to, like, wrap our heads around it and make a statement. But like, if it's a centuries-old conflict, and Israel hasn't been there for 100 years, like, what are you saying, man? Is it a thousands-year-old conflict, and this is actually a religious thing, and that's why? Like, I, I just wish there was, like, we could understand what people were talking about when they say things like this, because I feel like people are being unclear. And there's a lot of narratives about this whole thing that are confusing people, but I just feel like we all kind of can see what's going on, and for you guys not to represent your people would be really disappointing, so I just wanted to say that.
All right. Do we have any other in-person public comment this evening? Well, you already, yeah, everybody gets their one, yes, yes. Thank you. All right. I'm not seeing anybody else in person. We'll go over, okay. Yep.
That you guys are the representatives of the community at large, and you have the opportunity to table things or move motions forward, but I realize everybody's trying to use logic and be rational with funding and so forth, but if the basis of the community is speaking out for or against something, I hope that you would take a minute to consider not just grabbing funds and giving them to somebody because some large corporation has an opportunity at it, or whatever it is. I think you guys have an honorable position to reflect what it is the people are trying to tell you wholeheartedly. Whether it's our children being poisoned by lead, or people getting killed by shooting each other, or land development. If we're so concerned with agricultural parcels being built on, but we're not concerned about our own children's lead exposure on an undeveloped property that's been sitting for 23 years, and handing over $150,000 to a corporation that can already fund that and deny that to a, uh, a group of people who are working specifically to house up houseless people, because we're concerned about expanding into green areas, I'm just, I'm kind of perplexed about where our values really are, and what roles we're playing up here. I'm not sure exactly why you're in the positions you're in, but deep down inside, really, it comes down to reflecting your community as a whole. And I, and I hope you realize that's a, it's a huge gift you're given. So please hear us when we're up here speaking. Thank you.
All right. Not seeing any other in-person public comment. We'll open it up to Zoom. I don't see any online public comment. All right. Thank you. And I just want to add a statement, because one of the speakers did kind of quote some of an email that I wrote, and I tried to read it before, but that didn't happen. And so I would like to share some words for that, and just kind of, and go off-script a little bit, and just kind of remind folks that though we are all individuals that have stances and have very strong stances, we all have to work as a body, and that there are certain rules that govern how things are put on our agenda, and then when they are put on the agenda, and, you know, whether or not there is support from multiple council members to place an item on agenda. And so, again, I do really sincerely want to thank folks for coming out and protesting, and I've seen you on the plaza every Saturday, and I support that 100%. And again, as, as one of the speakers shared, I do never really thought, as a council member, that we would be forced to address and look at international issues. However, we are in a time where obviously our community is very, very passionate and wants to see, you know, some sort of statement come from their council members as a body, or maybe their council members as individuals. And so I'm just going to say, you know, now that the second part of my email that I sent out to these folks was that, as a private citizen, I'm going to continue to do what I'm doing, which is calling my congresspeople and demanding a ceasefire, demanding peace for the people of Gaza, and an end to the US supply of deadly weapons to the government of Israel. It's wrong, and I... We deserve peace on this planet. We deserve peace for people in the Middle East. We have not had peace in the Middle East in hundreds of hundreds of years, and that long too. And so, again, I just, I am a history teacher, I am a high school history teacher, and I really always do my best to, myself, understand the years of history that kind of entrench and inform any crisis, and especially this one. But just to, you know, always be clear that, you know, I will always stand for peace, and to look at systems of oppression and be able to recognize, you know, who has the power to both bring peace and to bring tragedy. So I just wanted to add that piece tonight. And if there's any other council members that want to add anything, or we can adjourn.
I just want...
Can we, can we table staff reports?
Say that I think that everybody wants peace. I think that there are many, many, many Jewish people that are horrified by the Israeli government. And I think that there are many of us in this community that are working towards peace and resolution. But, and nobody wants a ceasefire more than I do. I've been hearing parents call me because their children are scared to walk on campus. You know, antisemitism is up by 400% in our country. So just, you know, I'm hearing you hear me too. And, um, release the hostages.
Counsel, I heard some requests to table counsel and staff reports due to the late hour, but, okay, well, let's be quick then. Let's be quick. I don't, I don't really have anything. Yeah.
Real quick invite to our Clean the Sidewalk event on this Sunday in Valley West. If you want to get involved, please come. We give out coffee cards for those who clean up the most trash and best before and after pictures. It's nine for 11. Also, if you live in Valley West, if you're a business owner, if you are a worker and employee, next Wednesday and Thursday from 4 to 7, we'll be giving out food and want to hear from you. And on the improvements that you'd like to see in Valley West, the city council allocated through ARPA funds, $25,000 for improvements in Valley West and North Arcata. So please, if you live out there, work out there, or just love Valley West, come out and give us some support.
Thank you. I think that's a good community note to end on. All right. Thank you, folks. We are adjourned.